This is better.
Somebody, somebody.
No. Three citrus. Dan, baby.
For me.
She gets some salt July. Bouncing. I actually live in. So you from there would have been twenty pounds back. It's not it's. It yeah. Agreed up here. Very nice. Yeah.
I'd like to call to order the public hearings for the town meeting tonight for Thursday, October sixteenth. First public hearing is regarding ordinance O dash twenty five dash thirteen. An ordinance of the town council Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, amending the annual budget for the general fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July one, twenty twenty four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, to reconcile expenses and ratify over expenditures. Did you want to add anything to that at this point? Yeah, turn turn your mic on.
Yes, so the four ordinances that are on the agenda for the public hearing are to reconcile the expenditures so that each expenditure account is falls within the budget for our financial audit. We try to adjust the budget during the year as best we can in order to account for any unanticipated expenditures. You know, some things come up during the year, late in the year that we have not able to do that for, and these ordinances basically take the place of that and make budget adjustment at year end so that they would be in compliance with the charter.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Hi, Dan. Yes, so I like how you were able to present us with the Excel spreadsheet and stuff like that. I think due diligence, and I know that myself and many of us others were saying it's good to have that so we can kind of reconcile the numbers. Would be nice in the upcoming budget year for us to have a full report Excel spreadsheet so we can kind of track where things are going. Hopefully having a lot account for the overtures and try to predict what our spending would be.
Yep, you know, it's my my goal to be able to do that. And usually about at the six month mark of the fiscal year, I like to do like a midyear budget analysis and bring, you know, recommended budget adjustments to the council in the middle of the year. And that way, you know, you're not looking at as many adjustments at the end of the year and also get your input at that time. So you know, come the January timeframe of twenty twenty six, you know, I'd expect to bring that to you. We could discuss the budget a little more at that point, and if you all need any statements or anything prior to those times, just reach out to me.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions, comments from the council? Anybody else in the public have anything they want to say about this particular public hearing? This particular ordinance? All right, we'll move on to ordinance O dash twenty five dash fourteen, an ordinance of the town council Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, amending the annual budget for the utility fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July one, twenty twenty four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, reconcile expenses and ratify over expenditures. So the first one was the general fund. This was the utility fund. Dan, why don't you just weigh in for a second?
Yep, same explanation as the general fund. There's not as many adjustments in, you know, the utility fund as the general fund because most of the operations of the town are concentrated in the general fund.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody in the public have any questions or comments? Okay, we'll move on. Next is ordinance O dash twenty four dash fifteen, an ordinance of the town council Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, amending the annual budget for the water reclamation treatment plant fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July one, twenty twenty four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, to reconcile expenses and ratify over expenditures. This is so for the what I call the wastewater treatment plant and same principle as it was for the previous two. Any council members have any questions or comments? Anybody in the public have any question or comments on this? Hearing none, we'll move on to the final one. Ordinance O dash twenty five dash sixteen, an ordinance of the town council of the town of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, amending the annual budget for the water park fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July one, twenty twenty four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, to reconcile expenses and ratify over expenditures. And essentially, this is the same thing for the fourth fund, which is the water park fund, which is a work in progress at this particular point. Council members, anybody have any questions or comments on this?
Yeah, I just had a quick question, Dan, on the the fee related to the the engineering costs, and it says twenty twenty one. Is that accurate after the comma?
Where are you seeing that?
On the last page on the Excel sheet, it talks engineering costs in the water parks as twenty twenty one W two late fee split.
Yeah, that's the typo.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to amend.
No, I'm sorry. The twenty twenty one is related to late filing of W two fees. Apparently, they were not filed on time in fiscal year twenty one. A lot of those W twos were associated with water park employees because of the nature of employment at the park. We have a large concentration of the employees. So that cost, the full cost got broken out between the various funds. The amount that is in the water park fund relates to the water park employees. So that is correct. That's two different things. One is the engineering calls for the redesign, the water park. Two is the twenty twenty one W two late fee that's split between funds.
Okay, all right, I withdraw then.
Okay, well, your answer, your question was answered. Any other questions or comments? Anybody in the public have any questions or comments about that particular ordinance of the water park fund? Okay, hearing none, we will adjourn until the regular starting time of the meeting, which is six thirty. So you got five minutes to relax. Maybe six.
Want to know where the cocktails were for the break. As long as we all. One piece that I will say that probably not supportive is this. Reason that is is that that is going to interest. All this negotiation plays out. It could have, it could come to terms that they have to. We can't.
So the reason. I get the. Thank you. How are you? Thanks for coming. I know. So like if we needed to like schedule one day. If it's a contract, so that we're not having to wait three weeks because.
That would be harder. Violate the charter as we're supposed to give a certain.
We give the notice.
All right, if you would take your seats, we're going to call the meeting to order. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the town council of the town of Chesapeake Beach for October twenty twenty five. We have a distinguished friend with us tonight who is very have been very, very instrumental in many activities in the town. And he's a young, he's very young in his upper eighties, but he has, this is John Bacon. He's a good close personal friend, and he is not going to stand because he's in a wheelchair, but he is going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So turn the mic on and lean into the mic.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John.
Yes. Now push it again.
Counselors, their motion to approve the agenda. Motion to approve. Okay. Which section?
Well, real quick, it would be a motion to amend number two and new business. And idea is to make sure that the negotiated contract is brought in front of the council before execution. I'll give a second.
Second.
Sorry. Yes, I didn't have my mic turned on, sorry. What I would like to do is in the third line, first word says park. I'd like to put a period there, have the rest of that language stricken. And then new sentence saying the negotiated contract to be presented at a regular meeting to the council for acceptance and execution.
Is there a second of that motion? To amend?
I think I already got.
I I had seconded, but then I have though sort of an amendment too, so if we can do a discussion on it.
Well, that, yeah, let's let's, can we, if we can treat these two amendments separately, we'll vote online and then we can, and but if anybody has any questions, the the point of the point, the the idea here, what I'm trying to accomplish is that this item of new business is really to authorize town staff to negotiate the contract. But the second part of the language written here is also authorizing the mayor to execute the contract. It says upon approval, but it's not quite clear where the approval comes from. And I just want to make sure that the contract is in front of the council publicly before there is execution of the contract. Does that make sense?
Yeah, the only thing that's not clear yet, though, if it is about who is going to be the, who actually approves it. If you bring it back in front of us, are you saying you want us to approve it before and that before?
That's a good point. When I, when, when I say execution, are we talking about actually executing the contract after it's signed and agreed upon? Or are we talking about executing it as in signing the contract as?
Get your microphone turned on.
That is a very good point. People tend to use the term execute as a substitution for when they mean signing. They try to avoid doing that because you're absolutely right that technically the execution of the contract is the carrying out of the obligations. But in a, in a contract like this, it's unilateral in that the town does what it needs to do when it signs the contract. So in that sense, they're the same thing. The other side, their contract isn't, their performance isn't executed till they do what they need to do. So and to some extent, then the town has a corresponding execution obligation of paying the contractor for the work. So so it will be clearer for purposes like this if we refer to this stage as signing rather than execution.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. So this contract is so big and we have so much responsibility as a council and as a staff that I I feel that the that after the contract has become, is negotiated and there's a draft contract to the satisfactory of the staff that we're giving authority to negotiate it, that that should then be brought in front of the council in open session for us to look at before it is signed.
Give us a microphone.
Oh, just so I, just so I understand. You want to see the terms of the contract, but you're not necessarily saying it's the council that's going to authorize the contract. You just want to have an opportunity to discuss the terms of the negotiation. Or are you actually saying bring you the paper contract that when it's ready for the mayor to put his signature on and and you want to be able to go through the sort of terms of the contract one by one? I I'm not issuing an opinion on that. I just.
Yeah, I mean, I think that you know, I would like the council to to know the contract and to have it presented in the public and to have a vote on the opinion of the council on that particular contract prior to it being signed.
I mean, we've already seen a draft contract from Schibell, and we're having another meeting next month to authorize the funding.
We saw a template of a contract. We didn't see any, and it's this is what we're doing here. We're we're trying to authorize the negotiation of and the fleshing out of the real contract. So I'm just saying the council should see the real contract and the terms should be laid out in public at an open meeting prior to giving the mayor the authority to sign the contract, which is what the second part of this piece of new business does in my understanding.
All right, any other questions or comments on the proposed amendment?
Yeah, I think that's in line a little bit with what my amendment that I'm going to make, and and it's basically making sure that we have all the pieces in place so that I know that there's a hundred percent consensus that it's going to be the water park is open in twenty twenty seven. But if the contract isn't for that, I think that would change the opinion of the people in the public. So if it was like, oh, there's a delay, like everybody agrees to it, but if it's not in writing, that's what we all assume. That's what we all are agreeing on, but it's that final contract is is that extra step that I think it provides the public a reassurance that we're doing and putting the work in.
I think that's what we're trying to do. The way it's worded currently is we're having it reviewed by the town attorney and the staff, and I trust them to make the right call.
And I I just have a question because I I, you both know I've gone round and round about this. And I've had concerns about, A, the leverage that the previous council gave any contractor that comes in to build anything in our town, whether it's the same water park or different water park. You know, by by shutting down our water recreation facility, we gave an immense amount of leverage away. So, you know, I've had concerns about the negotiation process because it is a difficult process to engage in. The staff laid out a plan. And in good faith, I think, first of all, this this plan was part of the agenda, correct? That so I can talk about it. In good faith, Paddock did agree to provide the design while the permits were being applied for, and we have our town engineer and potentially a third party to validate all of the numbers. To me, like I personally have no ability to validate those numbers. So if a town engineer, a professional engineering, you know, construction management company are is evaluating those numbers, our town attorney is evaluating whether or not the contract is to our benefit. I'm probably at this point as comfortable as I'm going to get. It's it is the end of the negoti, I I will say that if those processes that were laid out take place and the engineer, a private construction management company, the town attorney feel like any party that we're contracting with is over exploiting their leverage, then I would want them to let us know and then, you know, maybe we would take some action to avoid that problem. But I don't know how we can, we need to get a design and in place to evaluate that at all. And to do that, we need to sign a contract. So so, you know, we're we're just we're in a bad spot because the previous administration allowed our water recreation facility to go down and and we need a design. I thought that that's what we were doing when we allowed paddock the sixty thousand dollar contract. But from what I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, a design cost way more than sixty thousand dollars, and Wayne's shaking his head.
Three hundred.
So so we really just need to get the ball rolling, so. I think there are opportunities with the plan that was laid out to me to evaluate if the numbers are reasonable and if they are unreasonable. There is a funding mechanism that we can.
All right, we're still protected next month because we just wouldn't, if we don't like the contract, we don't authorize the funding.
And and I would hope that we.
Well, hold on now. That's not, that's the problem. If this says that the contract can be authorized without it coming in front of the council, it's basically was what that's my concern.
Make that judgment on behalf.
I'm not saying that I don't want to move forward. I'm not saying, you know, I just want to make sure that it's clear how we're fencing this in of of this particular motion right now. Is all I'm asking is that before the contract is authorized, that the contract is brought to the council. And we can talk about it in public and then authorize the authorization of the contract.
I guess my question to you is. Can I finish?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, and then I'll try to be short. My question to you is if the town comes to us and recommends that the contract is within reason, that it is protective of the town, are any of us going to vote no?
I don't know the answer to that, but I sure like the deliberation, the deliberate action of us looking at it and having the ability to ask questions in public before we are giving authorization to sign the contract.
I I think one thing that has happened is that we've all appear have a part of the discussion, and I know I've said that many times before. Within this month and different conversations, I've been able to get the like the submittals of what the products that are being used for paddock. So I know that we're we're all doing the best thing and and I think there's ways that I knew in the discussions, one thing that John had brought up to a discussion with them about getting some tax purchase and things. So I know that there's going to be a reduction in this price a little bit. So I know Wayne's talked about it and stuff like that. I think us knowing where our ceiling is, is what I kind of understand not to exceed prices. I expect it negotiations to be less than that. So I kind of think that that's the number that that we've been sort of doing our quality control on. I think we've talked about putting protections inside of our contract and making sure that there's no ripping us off and and there's a a structure in place to sort of check our number as we're going along, I think, is what I I remember hearing somebody say something. Is that correct? Is that correct?
I don't. I can't tell you what the final structure of the contract is going to look like because I don't know what you all have agreed on. So. When you sign a contract. You're gonna have a contract and there's not, except for the processes that are in place. To amend the contract as to the prices, you're not going to be able to just sort of go along and say, you know, in the middle of it. No, we think that's too much because unless you're you're doing a change order of the contract. So. You you're gonna have to know when you sign the contract what you're spending roughly.
So, all right, I think we've talked along for this motion here. So your your motion is literally, but I want to give up my my perspective as well. So the motion is to strike the mayor's ability to execute. And and that's right.
For now, I mean, obviously, we would. We would give him the ability to execute when we have the when we have the contract in front of us.
Correct. So so.
Prior to having the.
I think what I what I would say to this, my my comments would be is we've been talking about this since we. Most of us are running for election. So a year ago, we've had serious conversations over the last. Uh, six months or so, and then Shible and Paddock were on a Zoom call or a Teams call with us. Where everybody had multiple hours to ask very detailed conversations and. Uh, and and, you know, you we got. So there's a lot of information. So this really is a do we entrust the mayor and the staff to do what is right? Uh, based off of the the sentiment of the 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 council and the the council would give them. That empowerment through a vote to execute after this. So at the end of the day, that's what we're we're saying, that he can go ahead and and sign to we he can negotiate. And then if he believes that he has done the due diligence and it meets all the stuff that we've talked about here, uh, and and we can execute.
But I I have one question before we take a vote. I'm fine to take a vote on this as soon as this question is. Presented and hopefully get answered. So that we as a council have recently amended our charter. Uh, with as as far as expenditures go and what limitations are and also. Um, we we raised things as far as what needed to vote and what doesn't need to vote. And then we also, but it's nowhere near this number, of course. And then, but we also. Changed the language of the sole sourcing. So. How does that, since this is a sole source?
So I and I I want to get you all used to the difference in terminology because it's important. A sole source is when nobody else can deliver the product. That's not what this is.
Right.
This is a bid waiver, which means you all are going to assess and in your motion, when you go to award the contract, you are going to address the criteria. That are that we included as.
Okay.
Rails around your discretion.
Okay, so so this you I think you're answering my question, right? So when when the contract is. Is flushed out. To the point where we have a draft, it will be brought to the council for us to vote on. Um, approving the expenditure.
Typically, the expenditure, yes. The actual physical contract, no, you don't typically. First, the actual physical contracts. You vote to award a contract in X amount. Or in the not to exceed amount, as the case may be. Subject to the mayor's negotiation of the terms and with my review, obviously, and.
But wouldn't we approve that expenditure prior to the contract being signed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and that's when you will also do the motion that you were just referring to in terms of addressing those criteria.
That's how we have it written.
I withdraw my motion to amend.
Good job, guys.
I'm going to make a motion to amend just to have it. Because there's, I guess, some things that are being said, so I'd like to make a motion to amend.
I'll second. I'll second. I'll second it.
Thank you. So.
What is the?
What is to amend?
He said to amend.
Amend. State what your motion is.
Motion to amend. Item number two on new business. Town authorizes town staff to prepare and negotiate design bill. So motion to amend the agenda.
Yeah, you're not amending the agenda. Well, I guess I'm sorry. I I take that back. I guess you are. So could you recite the motion?
Yes. Motion to amend the agenda, item number two on new business. Can I get a second? Can I get a second? Okay. I move that the council authorize town staff to prepare, negotiate, design bill contract with Shible Contracting and Paddock Pools for the water park rehabilitation project. Consistent with budget parameters presented. However, the execution authorities shall be reserved pending town attorney review and engagement of an independent owner's representative. Once these are complete, a special council meeting will be scheduled to consider it and if. Appropriate, approve the finalization of the contract.
For a second.
I'll second. So upon discussion, I believe that. It's important that we have the independent owners representative here in the discussion. Of Councilman Reinhardt, I believe a lot of it has been answered. But the owner's representative, which is our project manager, which would look out for the owners, the the town's interest to have the items that are supposed to be installed, installed. Wayne is a part of the process, but he's only as needed. Jay is in discussion in the day to day operation, but he is not the project manager. This is the person that would be. Making sure that the products that are used, the material used and doing all the. Management of that and protecting our interests so that we're getting the high standard that they're proposing to do.
Well, I agree with you, but it's my understanding that that is going to happen and could. Could the town administrator or the mayor elaborate? On that.
I'd like to invite the town engineer to speak on this.
Sure. So in essence, you're right. The contract manager is a third party that you, the town will hire to represent you as owner's representative. To oversee and manage the construction. That contract manager will manage inspections of whatever we need to inspect it and test it out there. And confirm that the park is built to the standard that it was presented. Uh, they're basically your owner's representative. So they're they're not hired at this time. They would be hired after you appropriate the funds and agree to award a contract.
So I'd like to add that part of new business so that we have that. So getting ready to be approved. So we we are able to start engaging and interviewing. I think Wayne has discussed that. So.
Wayne, can I ask one question real quick? Under staff recommendations and conditions, it says continue to pursue benchmarking through the town engineer and third party calls. Estimating a firm to validate costs assumptions. That's under the purview of also bringing that third party aboard going correct. So that's right here and right in force.
That is correct, and it's also part of your budget that has been presented to you.
But this stuff is already here.
Part of the introduced budget amendment, because if you look, it's it gives us nineteen million, which is more than the water park budget. And that that was to fund the project manager as well.
That is correct.
Right. So in effect, what you want is here. And it's already a part of the process. We just got to get them negotiating so that we can move forward. But I think that that will be taken care of. Um, through Wayne and through the town.
Sounds good. I withdraw on the motion.
All right.
Thank you. Anything else before we move forward?
And I just I just want to talk about it, the procedural issue of amending the budget because this these discussions weren't technically. Amending the the motions to amend the. Agenda. They were discussions on the agenda item. Right? And a motion to amend the agenda would have been to add an item, to remove an item, to change the order of the agenda. So most of this discussion, it's fine. I'm not. I mean, there's 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 no. Legal problem with it, but they weren't. They were actually discussions on the agenda item that could have happened under the new business item.
They wanted to change the language of them.
Even so, maybe you weren't. You weren't changing the agenda. The agenda item is still the water water park contract.
So in the future, instead of instead of changing language, you would strike that one and then. That would be one. And then the second, you could do a second motion to add a different item, or you could do one motion to strike and add.
You well, you wouldn't be striking when you got to the agenda item that you would move to the your motion would. The agenda item is council authorizes the town staff to do X, Y, and Z. When you get to the agenda item. Council's either going to agree to do that or agree to do something different on the same subject. So you so but the agenda item remains the same, which is the. The contract for the water.
Thank you for that clarification on on the way that we should have conducted.
We're just getting that out of the way early. That's all.
Yeah.
Oh, I doubt that.
All right, let's move on. Did we? Did we ever approve the agenda? Okay, is there a motion to ever?
Motion to approve the agenda. Aye.
The eyes. How about that? We're down to the fourth item on the agenda. It is time for public comment on any item on the on the agenda, and hopefully it will be brief. Uh, but please come forward, if you would, the microphone and give us your name and 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 what you'd like to speak on.
You can wait.
Go ahead, Bessie. You're you're closest.
So strategic.
Hi, sir.
Good. Good evening. I'm Cheryl Henley, forty nineteen fifteenth street. I've been a resident of this town for many years. Um, I'm here to speak about the water park. It's been a bright spot in our community. For all the years that I've been here and even before, and I'm hoping that it's going to be a bright spot. Years and years afterward. Everything is expensive now. We have to live with that, but. If you look around, we do not have a lot of amenities for people in the town, especially young people, older people. The water park is something that we can all use. So I urge you to. Support it and let's get it, whatever, approve the contract, answer all the questions. So that we can get started and look forward to opening in twenty twenty seven. Thank you.
I thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, Cheryl. Good evening, sir.
Hi, Kritik. My name is Punit. I recently moved here. I was going through this agendas and all the resolutions. There's a few things I'd like to discuss with you on this. On the new business, you said approximately this much amount. And he was mentioning about the project manager that we need a project manager for that. What's exactly the need for the project manager? We don't have any inspectors here.
Uh, we'll ask Wayne to respond to that, our town engineer.
So this is a pretty large project we're looking at.
Uh, that recommission?
The reconstruction of the water park.
Okay.
And in any large project of this of this nature, you want oversight of your contractor. So this third party inspector and contract manager will do exactly that. They'll do both. They'll manage the contract, make sure that the. Things that are being built are being built correctly. Make sure the plan requirements are being met. Make sure that things are. Make sure that things are installed properly. They'll overview and review every invoice. They'll review every every change order if there are any.
Okay.
They'll review every bid. They'll oversee the all the inspections of the concrete, the steel, everything that's built out there. And basically give the town the assurances that they're that they're getting what they're paid what they pay for. On a project of this size, you want a third party contract manager to receive this.
Okay. Sorry. For the you saying you're want to hire third party. To do a quality check on the concrete and other things. So do we have any inspectors here? In our town, do we have any any inspectors?
I don't think there's anyone with the title inspector. Your public works superintendent is your main inspector. It's Jay sitting right here.
Okay, so the superintendent, he's a competent person?
Sitting right here. Yes, he is.
Because if he's a competent and he works for the town, so he he have the best interest. We are hiring a third party. Third party will charge our fees, a project manager. Okay, I work as a project manager, so I know the things. For this size of project, even the superintendent can manage the project. It's big, but not too big. If we have a quality inspectors here. Our own quality inspectors, our city inspectors. They can. Okay, we don't have any inspectors? Okay, that's not good news. Okay, that will change a lot. I was not aware of that. Because I thought that if we have engineer here, so we might have a superintendent and we might have inspectors.
There are no inspectors. You have an engineer and superintendent.
Just for clarification, and and I think I understand what you're saying, but so we're municipal government within the county. So when I say there's no inspectors. If you bought a house in one of the recently built neighborhoods, the county does inspect for a U N O, right? So there there are inspectors. Through the county, but this is not a house. This is not a U N O. So there is no. Inspector at the town level that will. Secure such a project, right? I do inspect daily things, but this is a nineteen million dollar project. That's going to be built in one year. So there's no one entity that. At any degree is going to be able to accomplish that. Does that make sense?
Can I can I ask a question on that? Uh, hadn't thought about it, but now that you mention it. Given that the water park is on county land. And then that they have an interest in that land. Will they be inspecting the work or making sure that things get done properly on their end since they do own the the land?
Pass through. So there's a couple of things on that level. Going back to the first bill, it is county land, but the town leases it from. So we're in charge of the project. The county inspectors will inspect electrical, the the city plumbing and different things like that. Once you get inside of that scope, the pool, it's it's not a county inspector. There's not a qualified county inspector to do that anyway. The the slump test, cylinder break, twenty eight day break, all that stuff is going to take a third party. Paddock inspects along the way, but we need confirmation and. Be there, make sure they're performed right and it's applied right. You can set standards. But you also got to make sure they're met on site every day.
What if we added in the contract that they should be inspected by a third party under their cost? It can be added.
Well, I I think we're I think we're starting to get into contract negotiations and so I I think at the end of the day, it'd be you can make your recommendations and then this is depending on the results of the discussion with the council and the mayor. If he goes to, if he gets approved, the mayor will take your feedback and incorporate that into.
You can join the water park committee too and and have those things going directly into the conversation. But for the sake of our presenters, we need to get through the public comments so that we can move forward.
Interesting point, though. Thank you for bringing it up.
And actually, from from my point of view. I think it makes more sense to have an independent third party doing that inspection than it would be somebody that's under the contract to the contractor who's building the the park. And so I'd rather have that independent, independent eyes on it myself.
I totally agree with you, but like maybe a weekly basis visits or a monthly basis visit as compared to the daily basis. Because we need someone, a quality inspector, sit here on the site. So so that he can watch what's going on. Is they're they're putting the right quantity? Is everything as per the standard or not? But other guys from our end, they can go check all the reports, check the visible issues, what's going on there.
Yeah, and 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 we believe that that's what the construction manager will be doing. Okay, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there? This is the only thing we can talk about or we can talk about other?
No, we have to keep on this particular topic because we need to move on the agenda. So it's only right now. We're only talking about this.
Anything on the agenda?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, public comment.
I'm sorry. I got I got misled. But there is a time limit.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, one more public comment. Good evening.
Chesapeake Beach, Maryland. I've worked at the water park for about twenty years.
Chesapeake Beach, Maryland. I've worked at the water park for about twenty years.
I recognize you.
I bet you do. Um, I've been around young people for a very long time and the water park was a very integral part of our young people's lives here. And I'm hoping that that will continue to be that way. I mean, we did more than just have employees. We have, and you've got some of them here now, that they've worked from the time they were fourteen years old and they've worked their way up and they became responsible adults working because they worked in an environment where they were taught what they needed to do to work out in the public. They learned how to work with people. Um, they formed skills that they wouldn't have gotten anywhere else and they've been missing that. That's something that we have been missing. We've been missing the time when the kids would have a place to go in the summertime. And beaches around here are closed everywhere. Nobody can go to a public beach anymore. You have to pay to go to beaches. I mean, the kids need a place to be and they need it. And I, I hear all these good things and I'm hoping that that will be the way that we're going. Even businesses in the area suffered because the water park has been closed. It's been a great impact on this whole area. And it, I'm telling you that the water park, uh, families could come there with their kids. They didn't have to drive somewhere else. They could do it right here in our town. And that's what makes our town so special. And we've missed all of that. Yeah, people came from everywhere to come. I mean, when I'm working over there, people guys said, where'd you come from? Pennsylvania? Heard about your water park. I wanted to be there. So I'm hoping that you will move forward and make it possible again for young people to be employed, to have a place where they can grow up and enjoy being here, right in their own town and enjoying those things because they've missed that. And the town, I will say, I'm just happy with the way we've picked up over here at the fields to do things for the kids because we need that. That's what our kids need. That's what this is about. This is about families and making this a place where families want to be and want to come. And I hope that you will continue to move in that area, um, and make it just what it should be. And do things take time? Yes. Do things cost money? Oh, absolutely. Um, I've been in the school system a long time. I know what it takes to build a building and what it has to happen. And I know that it's, it, it's going to be something that you have to discuss, but I hope you will move quickly. And I know that it will be done. And I know to the best of your ability, nothing's ever perfect. Remember that. Doesn't matter what it is, nothing's ever perfect.
We are gonna, we, we are gonna take the lessons we learned from the previous iteration of the water park and apply that and Jay and, and Wayne and, and everybody else has been on top of.
You do an exceptional job.
They, I, I couldn't agree with you more.
Couldn't ask for better.
And I really thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak to you, Charles. But we need this in the town.
Well, and I thank you for your comments. I think there was one more person. Yes, please come forward.
Please. Good evening, everyone. My name is Courtney Gray. I live twenty-five thirty-five Sandsbury Drive in Chesapeake Beach. Um, I have the privilege of calling Chesapeake Beach my home my entire life. Uh, for thirteen summers, beginning back in twenty eleven, the Chesapeake Beach Water Park was not just where I worked. It was where I grew up. Um, I started at nineteen years old with, in my first season, I was promoted to a leadership role, eventually in serving as one of the sales supervisors for twelve seasons. For many of us, and I mean the employees and staff that I worked with, the water park was our very first job. Our first taste of responsibility, teamwork, and community pride. It was more than a summer paycheck. It was a place that taught us how to lead, how to serve others, and how to joy, find joy in connecting with people. Most importantly, accountability. When I look around our town today, I see former lifeguards, concession workers, and ticket attendants who are now doctors, nurses, teachers, lawyers, executives, and community leaders. The water park was their starting point, a place that gave us confidence to step into the world knowing we could make a difference. Beyond what it's meant to us as employees, the water park has always been a cornerstone, cornerstone for the Chesapeake Beach community. Every summer, it brought, brought families together, offered a place of laughter and connection, and created lifelong memories for residents and visitors alike. It was the heartbeat of our summers and symbol of togetherness in the spirit of this town. When the park closed in twenty twenty-four, it wasn't just a business that paused. It was part of our community's story that went quiet. But tonight, as we reflect on what it meant to all of us, I believe we're also reminded of its incredible potential to return even stronger. The Chesapeake Beach Water Park has always represented more than the slides and pools. It represents opportunity, growth, and community pride. I hope we can all come together to bring back this special place that shaped so many lives, including mine, and continue to inspire future generations. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? All right, let's move on to, um, item five on the agenda. Their motion to approve the minutes is a September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five town council meeting.
Motion approved.
There's a second.
Second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
I abstain. I wasn't here for that one.
Sorry?
I abstain. I wasn't here for that.
Oh, okay. All right, special presentations. Time for John Bacon.
Thank you for this time.
Thank you for being here, John.
Address the council and their country, and the town. Um, there's going to be a, a minute or so of background on what this is about. And, and that was that we're talking about the mighty oak, the mighty white oak is now the Maryland tree, state tree. And this was designated as in nineteen forty-one. What are you doing?
He's not doing it. It's, it's up here, John.
Tell him. Are you doing it?
She had, she was just excited to move, move your pictures.
Anybody else want to give the speech?
Go ahead, sir. We'll try, we'll try to, we'll try to keep, I'll try to keep Amelia under control.
Reason, the reason that the state, uh, designated the white oak uh, as a state tree was that in nineteen forty-one, uh, the white oak at the Y River was designated as the, as the, as a state tree. And the white oak at the Y River was, uh, the nation's larg, the nation's largest white oak tree. And it finally had to give up because of a lightning strike. And at that time, it had stood for over four hundred years. And it was, you can see that it was huge. Okay? Near that same time, my father was involved in a tremendous train wreck at Little Falls, New York. He was trapped in the train for multiple hours and it turned out to be two days. We all thought he wasn't going to make it, but he did. About three or four months later, my wife, my daughter, my, my father came home from a trip and he said, "We now have a motto for our family." And that motto was, "Don't give up," because he hadn't given up for two whole days in that train. Uh, remember the mighty oak was once a nut. And Dad and I decided we were going to plant a white oak tree on our farm uh, later the next year. Uh, skipping forward for a few years, my mom and my dad sold the farm and the tree, the town acquired it and, uh, a lot of adjacent land and turned the whole thing into a, a sanctuary, nature sanctuary, honoring my mother who was, I don't know, she was the person in the town that knew all about nature. Now, let's get to why this thing happened. Going forward a few decades, we come to the present. Uh, when my wife was recovering from a number of falls and going through a very difficult physical therapy, we would remind her of our motto, "Don't give up." The white, the mighty oak was once a nut. She finally couldn't last any longer and she has died in twenty twenty-four. About that same time, the town started a, got to be a sanctuary, or not a sanctuary, but it got to be a, a certified tree town. And the town decided that they were going to plant a tree for various people. Jay asked me if planting a tree for Marilyn and I was okay. I said yes, except it had to make sure it was a white oak because it wasn't. The project of selecting a tree at the tea, at the tree farm, we looked over a number of candidates and decided upon the tree you see on the board. Next was to find the right location for this tree. We looked at a whole lot of places and finally decided that a good location was right between Kellam's Field and the tot lot. There's a little space up there that is perfect. So we talked with a tree, tree farmer, and he got a large machine, which you can see here. And that is a large machine, believe me. And that came and dug out a hole for the tree. Then it went back to the tree farm and dug out the tree, which it brought to this big hole. And it fit in the tree, it fit in the hole like it was a hand in a, in a, in a, in a glove. The final part of this project was to add a bench so that people could both enjoy the tree and the tot lot. Two plaques were placed on this, uh, bench and area. The first plaque was, "I don't, don't give up. The mighty oak was once" something or other. The second one was a, remember, this, this was put on the bench itself, was remember Marilyn and I. So the bench then became so nice, the whole operation was finalized. And so Wendy and I, my daughter and I, went and sat on the bench and had our picture taken. Well, this was because we were able to find out that all the people, the parents of the children playing at the top lot, top, top lot, top lot, uh, were sitting on the bench, observing their kids having a good time. So we found a spot on that bench, a time on that bench. So if you want to go sit on a bench, you probably have to get a reservation. Okay? The project ended looking like this. There's the bench, there's the six-inch tree. And it is going to be a white oak. And if it lasts as long as the Y oak, it will be a hundred feet tall and a hundred feet across. Okay? Uh, Wendy and I, uh, want to thank the town of Chesapeake Beach, Mayor Wall, the town council, and especially Jay Berry for this wonderful commemoration. Thank you.
And tha- thank you for being here tonight, John, and, and your family. Um, I was there the day the tree was planted and it was really, uh, very interesting to, to see that happen. That was a great big truck that came in there. And I have a lot more pictures of the event on my cell phone than you saw on the screen. If anybody's interested, you can come up after the meeting and take a look at it. But thank you all for, for being here. And John, I also want to thank you for everything that, that you've done for the town over the years and especially Sea Box and so forth and so on, the Oyster Cultivation Society, which has been huge, uh, and it was a huge success. And, uh, just so sorry that Marilyn passed and is not able to be here tonight with you. Uh, you two made a great team. So again, thank you.
Living in Chesapeake Beach for the last twenty-five years has been a wonderful experience for both of us. We can't, we can't, after an, a number of years of moving around in the eastern part of the United States, we found, we found this place. And it was, it's just perfect. And that's after seven or eight or nine houses that we've had in the other places. And, and this is a great town. Thank you for having me.
Well, and it's people like you that helped to make it a great town. So thank you for being here, John.
Well, at least it wasn't a discussion about a contract.
Hallelujah.
Thank you, John.
All right. You don't want to stay from the town administrator's report? Thank you all for being here. Be careful going out. Do you need any help getting out? Okay, on your agenda, we also, um, uh, on your agenda, you'll, you'll have a note there about the Ethics Commission Council. Um, and we had a brief conversation with a candidate this afternoon who we are going to interview in tomorrow. Okay, well, we'll have, he's going to send his resume and so forth. So we, we think that we, we have a likely candidate for the, um, to, for, we think we have a potential candidate to fill that position. So anxious to get that taken care of.
Not Fred Sussman? Is it not Fred Sussman anymore?
He, he has declined to continue and the reason is simply because he's getting up in years and, and, uh, we, uh, we rectified some of the problems he had with this previous administration, but he, uh, he expressed an interest or no interest. Uh, he said he basically just didn't want to do it anymore. I think he's retiring.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Now, if you got another half hour or so, it's time for the town administrator's report.
I will be succinct. So, um, the town administrator's report was submitted as a part of the town council meeting agenda packet. So of note, uh, the biggest thing that I wanted to point out is that we've, the town has really been, um, working diligently to have, offer better constituent services. So we're doing that through notary services and some other systems that are, that have already been implemented and are in the process of being implemented. Uh, one, Zendesk, which you heard about, um, earlier in the spring, um, has been successfully integrated, uh, with the town staff. Um, so an example of that, so over the past month, we've received a hundred and fifty-three, uh, tickets via Zendesk. And ninety-six of those tickets, percent of those, uh, tickets have been resolved. Um, and we're able to resolve that this past month in about seventeen point one hours. So I implore the town, if you have a concern, if you have things that you would like to be reviewed or an issue, please submit your tickets via Zendesk. That is an email to info@chesapeakebeachmd.gov because that allows it to be imported directly into Zendesk and it allows the, the town staff to, um, address your, uh, issues or challenges more efficiently and effectively. Outside of that, I just wanted to, um, bring attention to page five, which discusses the Richfield Station development. And wanted to provide an update that the public works agreements have been fully signed and, um, the, uh, developer, uh, met with the superintendent for public works at Richfield Station to talk about what paving the unfinished portion of, um, leading into block S would look like. And uh, Jay, you can speak more to that now or during your report, whichever works best. Um, but it, from my understanding, everything is on track to, to move forward. The town has done everything that we can to make sure that the residents that live in that area are protected and, uh, I think we're moving forward in a positive direction. Want to speak to that at all, Jay?
Just the biggest part of that is incorporated in the PWA is a commitment that he would fix the paving, the utilities before any ground is broke. So and it's in writing, so he cannot start to build more until he rectifies the existing. If anyone's familiar with block S, the whole thing.
Is there a timeline in the PWA like that he has to get the paving done? Or does it just say like before any new development?
So his commitment is this fall and I think they'll do that. But the PWA is only good for a year. So if he doesn't get it done, then he'll either have to come here and redo it or it expires. So
That's good.
The bottom line is before he can start, it's in writing that he will complete what he started before he moves on. I think that was the my biggest concern anyway.
What is, when does he want to start? And does he have any major hurdles to start? Development.
I don't want to answer for him, but I know he's been back and forth with the town and plans to start this this fall. But I've also heard different things with him before, so until he's here and ready to go. But I do believe it's his intent to to start quickly.
Oh, but that process, does he have to go through planning and zoning?
Which process?
So we're talking about public works agreements now. Sign as a condition for continuing to develop? Does block S?
Yes, and they've already been signed. But this was, he had four public works agreements for block S, which was, you know, the unfinished portion of Richfield Station. And so what we did was tied the the finishing of the road, paving of the roads to the public works agreements that he already had with the town. So these aren't new public works agreements. They were the ones that he had before that had art that were either already expired or about to expire.
Okay, and they only address the roads, no other. But for him to build?
Yes.
What does he need to do to move forward to build? Have to go before the planning commission?
I don't believe so, no, these were pre-approved lots just in block S. This is not Streamwalk or any other areas. This is just block S, the way I understand it.
Okay, I will speak with you offline about those public works. It would be nice if the council could have a copy of those.
Yeah, I can get that to you.
Okay.
And I'm happy to answer any other questions about any other sections in the town administrator.
I have a question. When are we getting chickens? It's in here. It's still in this report.
It is. So unfortunately, our zoning administrator was not able to attend tonight, but it is on the agenda for the November work session for you all to discuss.
I did have a question, Sam, and it's not for specific details, but I would like to connect at some point in time on your note regarding the capital connection projects, just so I can, because I know that's a, it was a hot topic over the last year. So just, you know, if I can get up to speed on some of the context behind it, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Uh, one more thing, can you, I I didn't know, I wasn't aware that we do movie nights at Kellum's Field. Has it been a long, have we been doing that a long time?
Okay.
You gotta go to Kellum's Field.
That's cool. I know that they do them on the beach or North Beach. We've done that. We did that when our kids were young, but now that we don't have young kids, not really in the movie, the outdoor movie scene, so.
It's focused to next Friday.
Okay.
At six from six to eight, so.
Maybe you could bring your beautiful wife to an evening movie.
So is it like a drive in?
Might get a picnic blanket, you know, make some sandwiches.
Can we bring like convertible and popcorn?
Verbal as long as it's a golf cart. Anything else? I'm not sure to report.
I guess there's one that I saw when the planning and zoning, if you want me to bring that up now.
And if it's something that I need to send on to Sarah, I'm happy to do that.
Um. So inside of their um getting to their report, inside of their planning and zoning, it it's pretty staunch language when it talks about like offices, home offices and stuff like that. Sort of sort of concerning, you know, seems like there's a real hard line. And I'm not sure if that's the direction we're taking maybe for that to be reviewed. And and with the coastal resilience, I didn't know if we could kind of incorporate our stormwater management review. I know that I've talked about that a little bit with Jay and and I know there's a few items that need to have maybe a little upkeep or or some protections for some things, some runoff and different things. So if that could sort of be a part of that, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Share that with our planning and zoning administrator.
Looking right this minute, but don't you have a separate stormwater management? burdens, do you, or is that a county function?
County item.
Okay.
Town treasurer's report, please.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. I also submitted a copy of my report in your packet. Like to comment on a couple of those items. First one being that we are on target to have the fiscal year 25 audit complete by the end of the month and filed with the state. We'll provide a copy to the council once that's finalized. We are also looking to move our health reimbursement account for employee benefits to a health savings account effective July 1st. I think that provides more benefits to the employees and also less administrative aspect for the town. There is a slight cost associated with that, but it is included in the budget as currently adopted. So there won't be any budget effect for that. We performed the partner reconciliation for the treatment plan for the last fiscal year and it resulted in credits back to the partners of 942,000. The main reason for that is because quite a few of the capital projects that were budgeted last year got pushed back to this year. So it's really just a reallocation of the costs. But we give credits back each year or bill the partners if expenditures exceed what was budgeted. So for fiscal year 25, there is a credit back of 942,000 as it relates to the treatment plant. We prepared and submitted annual highway users revenue report to the state and also the speed camera annual report to the state. And the water bills for the third quarter will be mailed out tomorrow. So you should see those next week.
Anybody got any questions?
I had a quick question, just to confirm. So the water main break repairs, I know there's the two expenditures on there. Is that parts or is that labor to do the repair? Are we?
Probably a Jay question.
Yeah.
Assume it's mainly labor.
Hey, tailor or yeah, tailor utilities, is it us buying parts from them or is them coming out and helping us?
We actually buy all the parts. They do all the labor and everything else. But the town buys the parts. And I think that's, we spoke about this, Dan, if I'm correct, I don't have it in front of me, but that was buyer ARPA funding, so it's more reconciliation. We didn't expend it all in the year that the last administration took some ARPA funding to do it. So we just rolled it over to the next year. Am I correct?
I think that's where we said it's coming from. There are monies that are included in the budget that we designated as ARPA.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
Anybody else got any questions for the treasurer?
Yeah, I noticed you skipped over finalized insurance claim for Veterans Park. What what are, what's the details on the claim?
The total cost was about 45,000, mainly related to the refabrication of the benches. The insurance company will be reimbursing us. We've already got approval from them that they will reimburse us for the cost under the insurance with the exception of the $1,000 deductible. The case was actually heard by the state's attorney and the state's attorney received a $1,000 restitution from the driver. And that check has already been submitted to the tenant. So yeah, the pocket cost of the town will be zero for restoring the park back.
Since from the Tesla incident. All right, gotcha.
Anybody else got any questions for the treasurer?
Hi, Dan.
Good evening.
You're supposed to say, good evening, Dan.
Good evening, Dan.
Good evening, Dan. Wanted to follow up and thank you for some of the back and forth together over the last month. Is right now, are you going to talk about the R, the resolution? Or do you want to talk about that later?
I believe that should be done during the discussion when it's on the agenda.
Okay. And then did you, were you able to look into anything with that? As far as the utility fund and standalone and the grants and stuff like that? We had sent you the email about that.
Utility funds?
I sent you an email in regards to that. I think we had discussed that and a few other things, but.
The we responded back to your questions from yesterday, which
This was on in September the 15th or whatever.
Revisit that.
In next few months or something like that, whatever, we'll look into that while we're getting that together. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have the public works report, Jay.
Sure. I'll take questions, but I'll just hit some highlights. First thing, I'm sure everyone's seen they're installing fiber with like six crews all over town. So we're marking about 900 to 1,000 utilities a day, trying to stay ahead of them. So far, knock on wood, no incidents. And I'm actually, I've been pretty impressed because I've dealt with other entities and they're they're doing their due diligence, test pitting and going along. But keep in mind, Richfield Station, the heritage, there's nothing in the sky, right? Power, sewer, water, now there's Comcast, fiber. If you looked what was in the ground and you had to work on it, you wouldn't be happy. So I'm just expressing that. But so far, so good. And it will, you know, I understand it's going to bring competition to the town. It's going to benefit everyone, whether you choose them or not, right? Competition is good for all of us, so we're getting there. They're still on track for about a four month project. So I think that'd be wrapping up early next year.
Let me, if I could add a comment to that. The that company, which they their name changed, but IQ, IQ Fiber, they had a kickoff gathering where you weren't there. That's a shame because this was your initiative. But it was, it was, it was quite good and quite informative. And the thing that is absolutely amazing to me is the data rates that they're going to be able to achieve. And if you if you really need really, really fast data and have a lot of money, you can get it. But if you need something comparable to what you got from Comcast, it's going to cost a lot less. So now I don't believe that they have the off air cable TV features that Comcast does, but you can get the streaming from practically anywhere. So I just wanted to say that that meeting was good and I'm glad that Smelia and I had the opportunity to join that. And I think that this is a big benefit to the town. I give you great credit for that, Eric, for bringing that to our attention.
Have have we heard anything at all from the company regarding? So I've had a whole bunch of people saying that they've seen them and you can go to their website, you know, and sign up to get informed on when you're going to be able to access those. But there's been not a whole lot of communication regarding like when when they think they're going to start connecting to homes. You want that, Randy? Okay, you did. Okay. Okay, perfect. Okay. I was just trying to give some kind of framework because there's, yeah, a lot of people are excited. I mean,
The original presentation had like three phases, six months, 12 months, 18 months. So it seems like they're ahead of schedule.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Jay, do we know where they're at with the state highway department transportation permit? I know that's, I was at the launch with Lori was there too. I know that that was one of the things that they said were their challenge. So do we know where they're?
I know they received the one for 260. I'm not sure where they're at for 261.
So they received a state highway permit? If we can get that permit number, I didn't, I didn't see one when I looked for it.
Okay.
I think that was their one that they were really trying to get. And then are we given notice to the residents and stuff like that? Or have we mapped that out?
They they are and they're responsible for that. So wherever they're working, they put door knockers ahead. And if anyone in the town or the or finds it different, please let town hall know. But they, so far, they've been responsive, try to stay ahead of it and they put a door knocker on everyone's door.
I didn't get one. Yeah, okay. Yeah, yeah, we just, you know, I mean, it's okay. I know it's coming, but I just want to make sure that we are being being transparent.
And so I appreciate that feedback because I will, I will talk to them about that.
So Jay, I'm going to assign you to look out for our neighborhood. I've already gave our HOA a little heads up and kind of put it on them to contact. I can't remember his name, Mark. What's his name? Our our POC? Our community POC?
For the project?
For IQ Fiber.
Mark. And then what I'll do is I'll get with you, Smelia or whatever, we'll put something on our town website with some contact numbers. Because what we're trying not to do is have everyone inundate town staff, go directly to them, unless you're not getting heard or satisfied, then reach out to us. But maybe we'll put those, that number on our site.
Okay, yeah, I think I agree with Dan. I think people would appreciate knowing that construction's coming, you know, more than a couple of days in advance.
All right, I'm gonna go back to my list real quick.
Please do.
So just the other thing notable, and and I try not to put every single thing we do on here all the day in our wet wells. But one thing notable, I'm working with SDH, which is a company, some of our wet wells, 20, 25, 30 years old, they no longer make these parts, the components, and they no longer make the pumps we have. So for example, I'm at Valley View now, we're going to pull the componentry out. I know a fabricator and we're going to make these parts so we can keep our rail system, keep our existing pumps and and use those until they're no longer on the shelf, which right now they're not. So eventually I'm going to come here, I don't want to globally go through them all, right? We'll do them one at a time, but eventually I'll be stuck with, there is no pump that fits this rail and we can't fabricate it anymore. It's not the biggest cost because the the pumps are similar in cost. It's going to be the changeover, just giving the council a heads up. We're going to fabricate this one and probably get 10 years out of it, but we might do something on on the next one different. Last thing, I wanted to go over the memo that I sent to the council. And it's about the the fire hydrant at the fire department, which has been offline for about four months plus. That, it's in my note here, but briefly, since I started in 2006, we fixed that fire hydrant five times. And it's due to its location, saltwater flooding. If anyone's familiar, when you go by Seagate and it floods, well, it it doesn't show in the street, but the fire department hydrant floods too. So it's compromising the componentry and I'm getting some quotes, but what I want to do, I've met with the chief and the prior chief and staff, we're going to relocate that hydrant higher with the map, yep. I don't want to tell you the budget right now because I'm still waiting on two bids, but it's going to be more than the mayor can approve. So I'm going to bring it back in front of council. Giving you the heads up, will still be under my budget for that, but it's probably going to put me over my budget by the time the fiscal year is over. So I want to come back next month with three quotes, move forward. I actually asked someone from the fire department when they, maybe when they give their report. My hesitation and what I was trying to do, and Josh can speak to it. We have what's called a purple pipe that leaves our treatment plant. The town spent some money and put in some infrastructure that made time at the time or made sense at the time and it's there. But it's not going to facilitate this hydrant for the fire department. It would have been great because This hydrant for the fire department, it would have been great because it doesn't take potable water, it's better for the environment and they can use it without stirring up groundwater in town. But in working with Josh and understanding the hesitations with um, the process with MDE, that's years out. So instead of just fixing this again, I want to fix it one time and be done with it. Um, just want to give you some heads up. So next month I plan on, I'll probably have the quotes for the work session. And then we'll move to approve uh, at the council meeting. And if you have any questions about any of that, let me know.
Anybody got any questions for Jay?
I have one question.
Go ahead, sure.
Um, not on your list now, but you brought up a few times this year earlier, the painting of the logo on the um. The water tower, are we, is that proceeding? Done? Is it done? When you go to watch the movie.
Yeah, it, it is done. You can, and it actually, uh, I was happy with it, not that I care either way, to be honest, but it, you can see it from the rail trail. I had to meet the Abner's today. You can see it from Abner's, you can see it from the end of the trail and it's centered on the high span of the state highway bridge. And if anyone's not familiar with it, it's the same logo that we have. Actually, it's right here, same exact logo.
It's actually very photogenic on the rail trail back there, it looks like.
Yeah, and I've seen a lot of people taking selfies with the bridge, so it went well um, without incident and it's up there and done. And to go back, that was part of a grant that we received, so it uh, was in and out money, if you will.
The new handrails look awesome too, that's, that's.
That was a great.
Mm-hmm. And I, we got contracted help, which I appreciate the council support and budgeting that because uh, we did save a lot of money. A lot of that stock was pre-COVID bought sitting at my shop, so we were able to implement it and, and finally get it done and that's great. Where that project's supposed to be complete by the end of this month, weather permitting, and the last section is that last trussel bridge at the end of the trail, so that's great.
Right, good job.
Good, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, uh, next we have the uh, waste uh, wastewater treatment plant. I'm sorry, hard teaching a little dog new tricks. Josh?
I'm fine with he called it the wastewater treatment plant, that's why I call it.
Yeah, okay, fine. We're on the same page. Yeah, and it's got my name on it. In the plaque that has my name on it, in the plant says wastewater treatment plant.
Right.
Dedicated to Bruce Wall, so. We're, it's wastewater treatment plant any way you look at it.
Uh, so this past uh, call it a month, uh, we went through and did our standard PM as generated from the asset management software. We had a hundred and four procedures completed and sixty-two work orders that are generated from those procedures. We did our regular routine inspections and uh, testing for the filters and make sure they're operating properly since they're a major component of the plant. Uh, we did our annual cleaning for um. Clarifier number one that uh, went without any problems, took a look at the structure and seals and everything in the clarifier, everything seemed to be in good order. Put the clarifier back in service. We uh, had planned for cleaning clarifier number two this week, but with the weather that came through for the weekend, we opted not to do that. Because we didn't know how that was going to affect the operation of the plant. We're going to try and do that next week. Um, if the weather will permit. Uh. Going back on to the uh, issues with the increased fecal levels I brought to your attention last time, uh, tho- that issue seems to be resolved. Uh, we think it was part of a check valve on our non-potable water system that feeds our press that was not operating properly and was not fully seeding. We resolved that, we chlorinated that tank uh, and we haven't seen any issues since. Uh, we also think there may have been additional issue from the methanol feed that we um, use for our filtration or for our D-nit filters, which basically is an additional carbon source to feed the bugs so they can remove the nitrate. Um, we're thinking that the levels in that might have been a little bit higher, maybe we had some going in and it was inadvertently feeding. The bacteria that was in there causing some of those strange spikes we were seeing because we have a higher than normal reading than we have nothing. Without really making any major changes. So we think we, it looks like that problem has been resolved. Uh, we had a clean out of our chemical tank, one of our polyalumium chloride tanks. Uh, we've been having issues with the chemicals we use that tend to precipitate a lot more than what was expected. Uh, we cleaned out that tank, we're working on a trial run of another type of chemical, which is not expected to precipitate as badly. So it won't require as much cleaning of the tank. Uh, we just started running that chemical about a week and a half, two weeks ago, and so far everything seems to be okay. The biggest concern with that was that it would cause an issue with the pH in the process, um, taking it down too far. But honestly, our pH is usually on the higher end of our permit and it's actually giving a little bit of a benefit on that. Because it's dropping us down a couple more points on our pH and keeping us more center line on the permit limits. Um, filter number two, we just did the chemical cleaning on it uh, two, three weeks ago. And that appears to be operating well since that cleaning. We're working to schedule filter number three to get that completed. Um, we had two contracts that were awarded, uh, zero draft for our sight light project. And they're working to get the lights ordered and they'll be scheduling once they receive the um, all the equipment. And then IMAX was awarded the PLC project and they are starting the preliminary work for just getting full measurements and everything that they need for all the panels. Reconfirming everything that's in there and making sure everything, they're, they're ready to go on that project. So anybody has any questions?
Uh, do, do you want to comment at all about the, the partners meeting that we had?
Uh, we had our quarterly partners meeting yesterday, um, that was here at Town Hall. Uh, we discussed a few items with there for uh, Anaronda County. There was discussion about the INI issues that they're working on. They uh, have a fairly large project set up right now for addressing a lot of INI problems up there. Um, it's very ambitious looking at it. Uh, they are starting to work this month and expect to be done prior January, February of next year. Um, we're hoping that if that all goes well, uh, that should be a big solution. They, they, they have the um. Smallest amount of flow that comes to us on a regular basis, but when we have a storm, so they, they normally have about seventy-five thousand gallons a day come to us. If we have a substantial storm, we've seen flows get up to three hundred and fifty thousand gallons.
Yeah.
That's just rainwater. So, and that is the straw that breaks a camel's back. We're usually okay until their flows peak out. Once they do that, we know we're going to have an issue, we're going to have to start splitting flow. We may have to have people come in to monitor stuff. Um, we're going to be having a long night sitting there with the computer sitting in front of me. My super, assistant superintendent with a computer sitting in front of him, maybe one of the operators having a computer in front of him so we can keep an eye on everything that's going on and making sure. We're not having any issues. So.
Well, and I guess.
Stand in front of y'all and say we had a major permit issue.
Yeah, and I guess having sat in on that meeting, uh, what, what I want to share with the council. Is that there is now a good spirit of cooperation and collaboration with our partners and I don't believe that that existed in the past. Um, you don't have to make any comment on that at all if you don't want to. But uh, there, there is a spirit of let's, let's get this done and, and let's work together. And I just wanted you all and the public to know that, that we're moving in that direction.
So they are sort of isolated. That part of Anaronda County actually, when an unrelated topic, went to a board of appeals, a case for Anaronda County. Um, this last month. Is there any advice or assistance they need in unresolved that? I, I like that. We're, we're looking at having it by February, but. We should know where they're at by your next quarterly meeting, correct?
Yeah.
If they've made progress with that.
Next one is January? Uh, yeah, by January they'll be able to give us an update there. I've asked that they give us some regular updates and I'm uh. One thing I do is when we have major rain events, I take, we have access to all the flow meters out in the system. So what I'll do is I'll take all that flow data, hour by hour, minute by minute, compile it into a database, get all the rain data, plug that in, tidal data. All of it thrown in and graph it out and I'm able to see. Whether there was significant increases in flows across each one of the partners' flows. Uh, and if that's related to a tidal issue, if we were seeing a high peak tide or if it was heavy rains. Uh, what you'll see sometimes is the rain start picking up and all of a sudden those flows follow right with that rain. Well, that's telling me that's direct rainfall or direct INI going into that pipe, coming down the line, going through the flow meter, gets to the plant. Uh, sometimes you'll see it lag a little bit, that's more delayed uh, INI. That will be instances such as like sump pumps or water that's slowly perking down to the ground, slowly getting into the uh, gravity sewer system and getting down to us the same way. Uh, what we do is we, if I see an issue like that, I'll usually reach out and say, hey, whichever entity it is. We had this rain event, this is what I saw, here's my data from it, um, maybe somebody else might want to take a look at. And that's something we're going to do through this period. While they're doing those repairs, if we have rain events, I'll be giving them feedback, seeing, okay, hey, this is what I saw on my end. Looks like we're seeing an improvement over a rain event or not really seeing any change. So ideally what we'll see is less and less instances of their flows going as high as they have in the past um, during each type of rain event.
That's good.
And Anaronda County being as huge as it is, I'm sure it's got a lot of resources and, 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 and the, that utility. Uh, but this is a small, relatively small section uh, that's operated here that it comes to the plant that is jointly operated. So um, but this is, I think uh, what I've seen since I came on board this time is uh, we're, we're making, we're making good progress if I'm reading it right. And that was, that was evident in that meeting yesterday and I wanted you all to know that and I want the public to know that.
Oh, one quick thing for me, um, has there been any movement statewide or federally uh, regarding PFAS regulations or deregulations?
Uh, we did just recently get our new permit and there is PFAS testing required and therefore um, the treatment plant, it's quarterly testing for a one-year period. This is more just a information gathering is what it seems to me. Uh, we'll be doing testing on our influent, our affluent and our biosalts that are produced from the plant. Um, and reporting that data back to the state. Uh, my thought is they're probably going to look at that and see, is there an issue? They had, didn't really give a whole lot of information on what was going to be going on. If it was identified as being higher levels, this is more just information gathering.
Mm-hmm.
But with the permits, they have little caveats in there that say they can change what the. The information or what's required in that permit at their discretion.
Okay, so we, we gotta look and see if it's a problem first then.
Correct.
Right, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
Um, I, I think I know what this is, but I see uh, the O and M grant for fifty-four thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Yes.
Um, can you just, I, I don't want to say what I think it is, I, um, so I'll let you describe what that is.
For every year, we're required to keep our discharge uh, for nitrate and total phosphorus nitrate below four point oh milligrams per liter. Uh, total phosphorus is zero point three milligrams per liter. Uh, what the state does is we're able to be below three milligrams per liter for total nitrogen and below point three total phosphorus. They will gr- give a O and M grant, so it's a, they have a certain amount of money they get for the year. They look at everybody to put it in and everybody gets a little piece. Um, also for total nitrogen, if you're well below three or for the amounts that you're below three, if you opt into that, they can give you additional funding, I believe. I'll have it, I'll have it sitting here. Um. If I can find the page. I believe we're at one point. Oh yeah, the timeline is right off. We are one point three four for total nitrogen for the year, so that's. Uh, what, one point four or six-six below what the limit was for, to be able to even get the grant. And total phosphorus, they don't give us any extra money for that, but I think we were at a uh, point one on total phosphorus for the year. So for outperforming our permit limits, they give us a little bit of money back.
Right, so congratulations. Thank you for earning us back some money.
That's actually our fourth year in a row.
Was that on the, did we add that to the budget for revenue this year?
Uh, that's something I need to speak to um, Samelia and the treasurer regarding in the past, what they had done is they had applied that to the partners' bills as a discount.
Okay.
Um, I wasn't always a fan of that because it's money that could come back to the plant for O and M to buy parts or to buy equipment. So that's a open discussion I have to have.
It sounds like an open discussion. That's something that could go towards the, like, things like that for the fire department, things like that, you, you know.
Uh, it depends on how the funding would be used.
Yeah.
Because it's money coming back to the treatment plant.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the issue that Jay was bringing up about the purple pipe is a whole other monster. Uh, that's the non-potable water system at the treatment plant. When they put it in during E and R, they didn't fully build it. The way I see it, they have the pumps there, they have the chlorination there, but no real control system. You don't have any type of an expansion tank like you would, it, it worked just like a regular well system. You should have some sort of a elevated storage or expansion tank or hydro pneumatic tank there to manage your pressure. Otherwise, you're filling that line and every time something comes on, the pump's got to come on and immediately shuts off. And goes on, cuts off. They don't have any control system in there. So what would need to be done is a whole project to get that completed to where it would work that way. Uh, and the way the permits work for non-potable water usage uh, for the state, uh, the way that the requirements are, we would get no real benefit. For that at the treatment plant for the amount of water that's currently being used. Uh, the amount of water that was estimated for use at Kellums and probably even the fire department would amount to about three or four days worth of discharge from the plant. So there really would not be a whole lot of. Benefit for that to the plant where we should uh, have the cost on treatment plant. That should probably be more a town cost, whether it be from Kellums or wherever that would be, just in my opinion.
You don't have anything with the Highlands on your radar yet, do you? Or have you, has that started coming towards you?
That is with Calver County, um, they've discussed it a few times. I haven't heard anything recently and that might be something, Samelia, that we might want to add on for the next partners meeting.
Pretty sure their HOA approved that.
Yeah, I think they're in a little limbo because some of them, there's some people that are town residents there and then there's Calver County there and maybe that is something to talk about at the.
And that neighborhood's a little weird in the front part. When you first get in there is a town, then it becomes a county, then you get on the back end of the neighborhood.
Right where the paper, you can see where it's at.
On the end there. Um, but yes, I think there was. Do you recall what that was, Jay?
Yeah.
It's been a lot of back and forth. The way I understand is they needed to go into a special tax district to achieve that and uh, to my knowledge, that never transpired.
Yeah, and we had a discussion many months ago with folks from the Highlands. We had a delegation that came and spoke to us and. And I think where we left it was if, if they can get it organized, that, you know, we're happy to accommodate.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good report, thank you. Now we're ready for the, the short report of uh, town engineer's report. I guess that won't be the short report.
We can only be so lucky.
We've been keeping you busy, haven't we?
We could only be so lucky. Um, I'll just, I'll just hit the highlights. Richfield Station, as you, we've discussed, uh, I signed the public works agreement so he can move forward. Uh, on the two sixty-one sidewalks, SRTS project, I reviewed the scope of services provided by the consultant. And for the second time and found that the items they added to it were acceptable to confirm that it's a comprehensive scope. Um, water park, we've all been talking about that. Uh, obviously working with Shybo paddock and, and the town as well to. Figure out how we're going to manage this project and move it forward. Um, that's, there's all new change. Uh, BT elementary school, we finished up contractor invoicing as far as we can. We're now working with uh, the, the schools to finalize some remaining punch list items. Twenty-ninth Drainage, Street Drainage uh, project, we provided some draft drawings to, to Jay, actually some again tonight. Uh, for any drainage improvements for him to take a look at. And Rod and Rio, we did the, the elevational certificates for the uh, with the, uh, town's signature on the flood service. Happy to take questions.
Any questions for Wayne?
Uh, I have a question that's um, when you're talking to MDE, uh, where the CK pump station is. Is, is there a process for us to like be able to clean that out? I know that um, we had the railway clean and stuff like that and there's just a, I mean, there's a trash can there, things come from the, the road. And then we have the storms and, and I don't know what the rules and stuff like that. If, if you're in that discussion with them, can we see, maybe we can uh, maybe we can get out there as a council and clean it up?
I guess it depends upon what you're talking about cleaning up. If you're talking about just cleaning up trash or doing maintenance and, and things of that nature, you can just do it. There's no permit required. If you're talking about dredging, there's a permit required. And I'm glad you mentioned that, I skipped over that. Um, we have a meeting set up with the Corps of Engineers when the Corps of Engineers gentleman returns in November. Uh, he will get back to us. He's been on a two, two-month assignment and when he gets back to us, November the eighteenth, he will call and set the appointment to do that review in, in person.
Uh, he will get back to us. He's been on a two, two-month assignment. And when he gets back to us, November the eighteenth, he will call and set the appointment to do that review in, in person.
Any other questions?
I assume we'll be able to talk to Wayne when we talk about the water park or should we ask him questions about the water park now?
Why don't we wait till we get to that topic? I have a feeling that's gonna take a while. Okay. All right, next, uh, Calvert County Sheriff's Office. Good evening.
Officer Norton. How lucky you are. You got me two months in a row.
We feel privileged.
I just want to make sure you do.
Yeah.
Um, everyone got a copy of the report for the month of September twenty twenty-five. Uh, during that month, sheriff's office responded to a hundred and eighty-six calls for service, which was slightly down from two hundred and twenty-six in August. Which we anticipated with going back to school and all that good stuff, the summer winding down. During that month, deputies and myself had nine hundred and twenty-five self-initiated activities. Including patrol checks, traffic stops and follow-up investigations to, uh, open cases we have. Out of the hundred and eighty-six calls, some things of note, we had several thefts. One was an employee at Rollins was caught stealing various items. Deputy went out, investigated that and charged accordingly. Uh, with Rollins on that. We had a fraud identity theft at a residence on Ivy Terrace. Sorry, that's where the report was taken. Uh, not sure exactly where it occurred. They had stolen the person's identity and opened up. Uh, opened up a fraud joint healthcare and credit card accounts. So, uh, we're working on that with, uh, our detective bureau right now to track that down. Another package theft of an iPad. I know we talked about that. I believe that was in August. Uh, we had a rash of those. We just have one more on D Street. Um, had a destruction of property right over here on twenty-sixth street. Or that was on September eighteenth. Deputy Mac Williams and I were working. Luckily, we were able to catch those juveniles and, uh, the homeowner did wish to pursue charges in that, so they were charged accordingly. And that case is pending court right now. Uh, as a result of the traffic enforcement, we did have a couple DUI arrests. Uh, one was at Beach Elementary. And one was at two sixty-one near the Chesapeake Village subdivision. Uh, had several assault cases. Uh, one was on Ivy Lane again. That was a report taken, case was closed due to. All parties involved being uncooperative. We screened that with the state's attorney's office and they wished to prefer no further on that. Had an animal cruelty case on two sixty-one. Uh, someone reported some dogs not being taken care of. Deputy Angel went out, investigated that and charged accordingly. Accordingly, that case is also pending court. Had an unattended death, a elderly female, uh, had numerous health complications. She passed away in her residence due to natural causes on G Street. And those were some of the highlights we had for September. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
I have, I have a couple of questions.
Richfield Station has been getting checked. We're here last month. I made sure to tell them to let you know we've been checking on that for.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I do, I really do. I mean, you got two, uh, two of your highlights. You're coming from our area.
Yes, sir.
But, um. I don't know if this is true or not, so you can tell me if it is or if it isn't. But I heard a report that a deceased woman was found in the water or something in, in the North Beach area.
Yes, uh, in front of Atlantic Avenue, right along the Jersey wall there.
And do we have any information on?
I don't want to say too much, but I spoke with the detective who was investigating it and based on video evidence from the boardwalk. It is being determined as a suicide. Um, she went, she was unable to swim, went out on the rock jetty where it's deeper. Cause my question was, how'd she do that at the beach? I mean, I've been out there and the water gets up to. You know, my kneecaps. Um, so apparently she went in where the section was deeper and you could actually see her throw herself in. She could not swim.
You're a resident of the?
She was, um, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Um, she was, uh, resident of PG County.
Okay.
So. Uh, but not to divulge too much. I don't know when they plan to release that report to the newspapers. I think they're wrapping up the investigation now. But I have been in contact with the detective who's handling, it's, uh, Deputy McDowell, who used to be a deputy up here in the beach. But yes, that, that was true. I've, I've been questioned about that numerous times since that happened. That was, uh. I believe that was October fifth this month. So.
Thank, thank you for that.
But there was no, uh, nothing, no foul play, nothing like that. I know a lot of the citizens that have talked about it have been concerned about that.
And then just two more questions. Last time I was here, which was two months ago, I missed last meeting. You, I'm not sure, I think it was you, but someone was talking about an investigation at, at Richfield Station where there was. Someone going to back doors and trying to get into houses.
We had not had, we are, sorry, we have not had any more instances of that. Uh, we have increased patrol checks in there. Um, I don't want to get away, give away all our secrets, but we have increased our presence in there. And, uh, since that meeting, I have not, uh, received any calls in reference to that. Or, uh, checked off on any reports that deputies have taken.
The individual was never identified?
Not to my knowledge, sir.
Okay. And then, um, I noticed that. Just, uh, on your report here. Your, the, the patrol checks and the traffic stops. For the Twin Beaches, Chesapeake Beach tends to have a bunch, have, have, have higher numbers, significantly higher numbers. Is there, what is, what's the reason behind that?
Uh, they're safety in numbers. I will say that. Um, a lot of the deputies tend to stick to two sixty and two sixty-one. Cause there's higher traffic volumes. Um, or as we joke, you know, fish in a barrel. There's, there's more violations. Uh, than there are on the North Beach side. Plus, we have two deputies that are strictly paid for by the town of Chesapeake Beach. And they strictly enforce the traffic laws over on this side.
Yeah, I guess that's, my real question was, do we pay for more, um. More tr- checks and more traffic stops or is it that there's more violations or both?
I would say it's a combination of both. Uh, I know, I just came up here in January, but to my knowledge, the town of Chesapeake Beach does pay. Strictly pay themselves for two deputies out of the eleven that we have up here.
Actually, I was gonna discuss traffic stops. I know that. We have had an increase in traffic stops. I live off of two sixty, so I, I actually know how fast and, and it's. There's a lot of speeding. Uh, it seems that there's been a slight improvement, but I think. Especially Halloween coming up and, and the holiday season and stuff like that, I think. Kind of, maybe it was a little lax, a little bit, and nobody wants it, but we also are coming into a township, so.
Yes, sir. I know, uh, me personally, I spend a lot of time off of two sixty, uh, because I. Walk the trails and things like that and I come into contact with citizens. The most recent one, uh, elderly couple had talked to me on the railway trail one morning. And said they were having issues in Richfield Station. I've been spending a lot of time in there and reminding everyone where the stop signs are, what the speeds are. Those kind of things. Um, so I mean, the traffic numbers were up because when I came up here to just begin supervising, I saw they were down and. No, if we're not, we don't have something to fill our time, we go fill our time with proactive enforcement. And that's what I drew into the deputies heads is proactive enforcement.
I, I did have a quick question for you. So I know, um, Bucks Homecoming, uh, was this past weekend. I, I do know there was a few incidents. Uh, that, that occurred that the Bucks were trying to resolve. If the Bucks have, uh, like a signed commitment from a, a parent. That says they will, uh, they can be removed from the field. Does the, does the police department or the sheriff's department require to have something from the town? In order to enforce that or could you enforce that based on the commitment between a parent and that organization when they're, when specifically when they're using the field for. Official events?
So Lieutenant Phelps and I did discuss that. Uh, he brought me in on the issue that we were having there. As he and I discussed, I said, you know, that's town property. They own the town, so just like your residents. I can't tell anyone, they can't come to your house. You know what I mean? So that's, that's kind of how we were looking at it. I know my kids play sports in the county. I know we sign all, you know, these agreements and things. I, I haven't really run into that before, so I think that may just be Lieutenant Phelps and I need to sit down with, uh. Well, not, Samelia and just maybe discuss that a little further on, on how we want to pursue that. Because unless one of you folks sitting up here tell me, hey, they're not allowed here. You know, I mean, I can trespass them based on what y'all tell me and if they violate it after that, then we'll take, you know, obvious enforcement and charge them accordingly.
Right, and no, and there, and there's a lot of discussions I need to have. I just wanted to get your, like, from the sheriff's perspective of like, you know, like. If they come in and say like, look, this parent signed this, then if, if that's no, then that's something I'm, I'm gonna talk with Samelia, uh, and the, the town lawyer as well.
I look at that as if the Bucks are playing down at Howling Point and one of the Bucks' parents, oh, that Buck parent needs to go. Well, that, this isn't even y'all's field, you, so.
Yeah, I'm on board. I'm on board.
Lieutenant Phelps and I, he's been out this week. Uh, we did discuss that. The end of last week and he and I were going to discuss that further with, uh, Samelia and just see how we wanted to go forward with that, just so everybody's content.
Yeah, absolutely. Appreciate it.
And, and I would add that Jamie is very involved with the Bucks, so he would be a good person. You might want to include him in your conversations if you can get him free to come.
Okay. Yeah, and again, it's, it's, it's not like I want to put the town at any liability for, for the Bucks. It's just whatever's, whatever is the easiest to. It's, it's more about the safety of the, the kids, because as you're aware, you, I heard some of the, uh, the reasonings. Uh, for the sheriff's department we called and, and, uh, we don't want that, uh, around kids at all, so.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
All right, I will be here till the end if anyone needs to speak with me about any.
I appreciate that you are staying to the end. Okay. All right, next, uh, North Beach Volunteer Fire Department. And we're gonna ask you, after you give your report, to hang in here for a while. Okay?
Uh, good evening, um, Scott Coson, the volunteer, uh, the vice president, North Beach Volunteer Fire Department. Uh, I have Deputy Chief Tippett with me in attendance also. Greetings from Chief Stanton and President G. I don't believe you got a statistical report emailed this time around. We had a little glitch, so we're, we're working on that and we'll, we'll get that to you. Uh, we did do a little rough counting and so these aren't a hundred percent accurate, but it's pretty good. In, in the town itself for the month, it looked like seven fire calls, twenty-one EMS calls, one gas leak. Uh, two lift assists and one service call. So nothing has been, uh, too crazy, no uptick in calls or anything. Uh, it's been a very busy month for us, but on a good side. This is fire prevention month, so we've been going out to all the daycares and the elementary schools. Doing our visits with the kids, passing out the fire helmets, talking to them about fire safety and everything. A couple, uh, events coming up. We're doing our, uh, own trunk or treat and I'll get a flyer. And it's also, all this is, should be on our social media, on our Facebook page and everything. But we're doing a trunk or treat at the firehouse on Sunday, October twenty-sixth from twelve to two. Bring the kids by. I'm looking at fire trucks, we'll be doing some music, games, prizes, that kind of stuff. Uh, we will be attending the event the evening before on the twenty-fifth here at Kellum Field. So we look forward to, uh, we're gonna decorate the fire truck a little bit. Hope we don't scare any of the kids too bad, but we'll be. Passing out some candy and everything. I will let you know, if you just keep an eye out, we're gonna, our cadet program, we're trying to. Get some extra fundraising money for them. We want to do some educational trips. One of the big things we do with our cadets is not only. Get them trained and work at the firehouse, but, uh, we take them like to the fire museum. We, we try and teach them a little bit of history about what goes on. And one of our big trips we're trying to do next year is actually a trip to New York to let them visit the nine eleven museum. So we're gonna be, uh, hitting up some fundraising. It's mostly gonna be like at the restaurants, those kind of things. Officially, our first one, well, the first one we got approval for will be December fourth up at, uh, Mod Pizza in Dunkirk. We've also, we're working with Chipotle and in the town with Lido's in Mexico. So that stuff will be on, on our, our website. We'll be pushing it out. We'll be sharing it a lot. This Saturday morning at, uh, I believe it's eleven o'clock. The Calvert County Fire and Rescue Memorial, they do their annual memorial service, which is down off of Brooms Island Road. We have two members from, uh, North Beach that have passed in the line of duty. They're on that wall, so we'll be down there. Uh, representing if anybody wants to come out. It's very emotional, very. Thought provoking, uh, service that they do down there. Other than that, like I say, it's not, uh, we've been busy, but on a good, on a good way. We've been, we had our open house, which was very, very well attended. Unfortunately, some of our staffing. That was at the open house, we had to go with the recovery they spoke of earlier over there in the water. And it tied up about fifteen of our operational members most of the day, because they had to. Stay throughout the, uh, entire process. So we had to cut some of our events short, but we still had a great turnout from the community and we're able to. At least let the kids get in there and run around on the fire trucks and stuff, even though we. We usually like to cut up a car and do some kind of demos, but unfortunately we couldn't do that because we were just all tied up. All the operational members were tied up.
So we appreciate everything that, uh, that the fire department does for the community. Uh, and as I think, uh, anybody from the fire department knows, I had a fire in my house and, and you all saved it. And I'm very grateful for that, even though it took us a year to rebuild it. But at, at least it didn't go down to the ground and the house that's attached to my house didn't, wasn't damaged at all. I'm very grateful to the North Beach Volunteer Fire Department.
And that's why we're here.
Yeah, well, and thank you for being here tonight. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Thank you.
I bet Dan does.
I actually went to the, uh, to the event.
Open house?
Yeah, yeah, it was nice seeing the UTV and.
It, uh, UTV got its very first run last couple of days ago. Wasn't here, was down in Huntingtown, a gentleman at a farm had, uh, fallen off a horse. It was way back in the woods. So we had to run the UTV all the way down to Huntingtown to, uh, get back into the woods to be able to extricate this gentleman.
So Eric, last month he was talking about that. I asked him in regards to like having some. Rescue plans for Richfield Station and stuff like that. And it's something that they've actually been proactively. Coming up with, so in the event, we have another way to get there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much for being here and, uh, hang out for a few minutes.
Yes, sir.
The mayor's report. Um, what we, what you're seeing is the, uh. The, uh, proposed monument, monument, what's the gentleman's name again? I'm drawing a map. And so he came and presented and, and, uh, so this is what's going on. But, uh, if I'm not mistaken, at the Legion, it looks like they may have already started digging in the hillside to make this happen. Is that right, Jay? Can you, do you know?
That I do not know.
Okay, and so anyway, this is what the, the report is gonna look like or the, um. Monument's gonna look like. It honors the military services and, and so forth. And, uh, I can't read the, the wording, uh, from here, but at any rate, you all can read the wording. Let's go to the next slide, please. And, oh, look here, uh, the three on the right are very suspicious, uh, people. I think that, uh, you, Sergeant Norton, you should take a look, keep your eye out for them. Oh, wait a minute, that's our council member is presenting a five thousand dollar check. To, uh, to the Beach Buccaneers and, uh, uh, so that's, uh, Justin on the left there receiving that. Uh, from the town and thank you all for making that presentation. And I, I can't say enough good things about the Beach Buccaneers. They provide such a wonderful recreational opportunity. Uh, for the kids in our community and, uh, I got out there. I, 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 I'd forgotten the lesson that you go out there when the sun's, uh, uh, still lit and it's. Fine sitting in the bleachers and the minute it goes down, you get cold. I forgot that. And then I remembered a short minute later that I had a coat in my car, so I went to the car, got it, came back and enjoyed the football game. But anyway, uh, yeah, so that was the Beach Buccaneers. This is just, uh, you know. We live in a, in a, in a great place and what you're looking at is two pictures that I took with my cell phone in my yard of the. Uh, a bumblebee on the left that's got pollen all over the front of it and a butterfly on the right. And I just thought that that was, uh, some pretty pictures, so I thought we, we ought to have some pretty pictures for the town meeting. Let's go to the next one. You all recognize, and this is why I wanted you folks from the fire department to stay to see these, uh, pictures, uh, after the fact. But when you were here, if you were here last month, you saw us. But when you were here, if you were here last month, you saw us making the award to this young man. Uh, who did a heroic thing and we have two county commissioners and the sheriff and myself in that picture plus him. And um it was uh uh he 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 did a great job of rescuing uh uh this lady that had slid and fell behind her car. And he's very disabled, and if you were here, he we tried to get him to come through this door. He wouldn't. He walked around to that door. He finally came in. It was it was difficult, but what I didn't know, if you go, I think the next picture, oh, it's not the next picture. Um, but uh afterwards, the firetruck was out here on the outside and the fire department treated him like royalty when he went out there. And so while we were still in here meeting, uh, he was out there and so he's he's seriously disabled. But uh he did a very heroic thing, so I just wanted to recognize that again. Uh, this picture, um, Anthony, can you speak to this picture?
Okay. If you'd like me to.
I I would like you to. You can see uh, well, and I'll tell you, the upper left is writing on the wall.
Right, so.
Below that is something that was written and then the right is the end result, but if you would elaborate.
The writing on the wall, um, this was during the uh overdose awareness event that we had at Kellums Field. The writing on the wall is for people who came out to uh. With their loved ones who have uh passed from an overdose or are currently uh dealing with substance abuse. The mural that was placed over that um artwork is uh from Hope Grows Flowers. Um, I think that's the direct quote. I had to see it again, cause you guys got me worn out when I was talking. Um, but what we did was put a mural there in honor of them. And the mural is basically about hope and about growing things from from sorrow, from grief, from trauma. So that it can be something that can push people into a more positive future. And then actually, if you go to the mural, which is there now. Um, if you go look at the wall, you can see where we printed the names of everybody who was. Muralized on the actual artwork, so you can find the names in there if you go close to take a look at it. Um, so this uh artwork was done by Katie Brinkley, um, who is uh local to Calvert County. Um, that worked worked with Arts Council of Calvert County. Um, and we wanted to find a way to work with the revitalization of Kellums, to beautify it, get onto the community, do some things that are art based. Um, but also have the opportunity to um have a place for my remembrance. And for the transition from trauma and grief to hope for people in the community who have lost ones. So that's what that is.
Thank you, and and that event, we were, my wife and I were able to attend that and we were very moved by what. We saw going on there and I I commend you for everything that you're doing, Anthony. I mean, I uh and and the team that you're working with.
And we appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, it's really, it's really uh a great benefit to our community and thank you. All right, and oh, wait a minute. Where did this come from?
Here it is.
Where did this come from? Uh, guess what? Guess whose birthday today is? Hint.
It looks like it.
Can we all sing happy birthday to Anthony?
I'll sing it with you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Anthony. Happy birthday to you. I can offer a sing. Just for this moment, you know, Bruce always said that Samelia had his angelic voice. I was really just listening out just for that voice. But he doesn't know that Lori has one also.
Well, she didn't.
You should have heard this one.
Are you gonna do a solo next month?
But thank you. Thank you all.
Um, and if you're still here when the uh meeting is over. Um, I believe that there's gonna be some cake in the conference room so to celebrate Anthony's birthday.
There will be cake. I might not be here depending on how long you guys take. Double things, bro, you know, we can get there soon enough. I'll be there too.
Now, look, this is serious. Stop laughing back there. Um, everything is so serious. Um, I have two uh things to read here, uh, and uh just let me go ahead. Um, this is about uh comments about the water park. Uh, both of these are comments about the water park. My name is Joanna Flores. My family resides in the town of Chesapeake Beach. I'm thirteen years old and I have an eight-year-old sister. We love to exercise and swim. When we moved here three years ago, one of the major draws was being able to walk to the water park in order to exercise and have a place to make friends in a safe, monitored environment. It was a big reason we chose to chose a house in the town. At that time, I had been a competitive swimmer for three years and was looking forward to being old enough to train to be a lifeguard the following year. It has been a goal of mine and my little sister's to lifeguard and teach swimming uh in the summers, just like we benefited from uh growing up. The water park teaches responsibility to teens and allows us to have a place to be. When the water park closed one season after we arrived, we were devastated. We have always lived close to a pool we could walk to. And developed a loving community of friends and neighbors who became a support system for years. When we lived in uh Prince George's County and had hoped to do the same here in Chesapeake Beach. Having great amenities for families is an important part of community building. Kellums Field, the beach and the community center are nice, but the water park is the highlight of the town for us kids. It's something that many places don't have that make this place special. Uh, I know it takes money and it needs work, but our town residents depend on the town to create community. And the water park is a big part of that. It's worth the money to have a thriving place for families. Please bring back the water park. I will donate my allowance and birthday money if that's what it takes to raise enough money to bring it back, but I hope the adults will give more. So that's from Acacia Flores, and I have one more.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, oh, this is also from Acacia Flores. Okay, uh, okay, I'm sorry.
This is Joanna.
Okay, uh, says my family uh wants to be there at town hall tonight to speak, but I have to work and I can't commit. Uh, that other family will be able to bring them. Please know that this is what the town families uh want. Here's what my eight-year-old says. My name is Cassie and I'm eight years old. When we moved here, I was really happy to have a water park in town to walk to. I've been swimming competitively since I was four. I'm the youngest in Maryland and it's my favorite thing to do. The lifeguards at the pool were my best friends each summer and they taught me how to swim when I was three. I've been pretty sad without a close place to swim, especially since the water park was so fun. More than my old pool where I swam for years and learned to make friends and really learn to be an outgoing kid. The lazy river and the slides were so special because a lot of pools don't have those. I used to dream of being a lifeguard at the pool when I got big. Now that I don't have one that I can walk to, doing my favorite exercises regularly are much harder. Swimming at the beach and the bay. And in the bay are fun, but a clean water park and pool are much safer for my health and the community. I've been stung by jellyfish in the bay before and it makes me cry and it really hurts for a long time. I hope to be able to swim again soon and one day contribute to the town, maybe as a lifeguard. Please, thanks. So wanted to share those with you. All right. It's time to move on to resolutions and ordinances. It's time to vote on ordinance O dash twenty-five dash thirteen. An ordinance of the Town Council, Chesapeake Beach, Maryland. Amending the annual budget for the general fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five to reconcile expenses and ratify over expenditures. We talked about it briefly in the public hearing time. Is there anything else that you want to add, Dan? Any questions? Is there a motion for?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, next item, vote on ordinance O dash twenty-five dash fourteen. An ordinance of the Town Council, Chesapeake Beach, Maryland. Amending the annual budget for the utility fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. To reconcile expended expenses and ratify um over expenditures. So this, this is for the utility fund. Is there a motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, now, vote on ordinance O dash twenty-five dash fifteen. An ordinance of the Town Council, Chesapeake Beach, Maryland. Amending the annual budget for the water reclamation tran- treatment plant fund. Of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five to reconcile expenses and ratify over expenditures.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Vote on ordinance O dash twenty-five dash sixteen. An ordinance of the Town Council, Chesapeake Beach, Maryland. Amending the annual budget for the water park fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. To reconcile expenses and ratify over expenditures. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, next item, vote on resolution R dash twenty-five dash one, a resolution supporting. The Sustainable Maryland Certified Municipal Certification Program.
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, at this time, we'll introduce ordinance O dash twenty-five dash seventeen. An ordinance of the Town Council, Chesapeake Beach, Maryland. Uh, amending the annual budget for the general fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. To pay for the design, construction and project management of the town of Chesapeake Beach Water Park Revitalization Project. And we will set a public hearing for six fifteen uh PM on Thursday, November twentieth.
Motion approved.
Well, that that doesn't require a motion. It's just an introduction. So next, we're gonna introduce uh ordinance O dash twenty-five dash eighteen. An ordinance of the Town Council, Chesapeake Beach, Maryland. Amend amending the annual budget for the water park fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. To reallocate the revenue for bond bill funding. And decrease the capital project cost by one point one million dollars to pay for the construction. Of the town of Chesapeake Beach Water Park Revitalization Project, and we will set that public hearing for follow immediately after the public hearing of the previous ordinance. At roughly six thirty or so, six fifteen, between six fifteen and six thirty. All right, Planning and Zoning Commission. There's a report submitted. Is there anything to be read from that? You have that in your packet. Does anybody have any questions about that?
I had mentioned something to Samelia. She took her notes on that, so thank you.
Okay, we're good. Anybody else? All right, Board of Appearing, the Board of Appeals, there was no hearing held.
Bruce, one one piece, um, like I mentioned earlier, I went to the uh Board of Appeals case in Anarondale County. And there was uh, the way that their procedure was held was pretty decent. I sent it Samelia. And uh Lori an email just in regards, I know me and Lori participated and I know we were looking at maybe doing some things if that could be sent to their chair. Uh, see if there's something with their procedures that could help us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds like a good idea. Uh, all right. Next, the Chesapeake Beach uh Oyster Cultivation Society. There is a report, I believe, in your packet. Uh, anybody want to speak to that? Ah, hey, come on up, come on up, come on up. Good to see you.
Yeah.
Good to see you again.
The report is pretty comprehensive. I just wanted to say the field trips, which is our big program of the year, are going stunningly well this year.
Except for today, we had some hiccups, but all got resolved. It was all good. We've had great weather. The kids have been enthusiastic. We've had no late buses.
Everything has been going really smoothly. Now we still have two weeks to go, so I hope it's gonna continue that way. But it's been a good season for us, so it's really worked out well and. John and Lori and Anthony have all come out and taken a look at the program to see what we're doing, how we're spending the town's money. And so I hope that's been productive and informative for them, so it's really a great, great program.
Impressive.
The other big project that we have going on, which is really only two days out of the year, but it happened today. We planted, deployed twenty cages of oyster spat for the Maryland Grows Oyster Program. And that program is designed to educate um residents, community residents, on the growth cycle of oysters. And anyone who has a dock on flowing brackish water can claim as many cages as they like. The state provides spat for free, um, and then they overfought winter their. Excuse me, spat cages until the spring and in the spring we collect them. We count the growth on the spat shells, see how many oysters we've ended up with or estimated count. And we will take them out to our reef that we maintain and um build on that. We estimated twenty cages is about what we did last year and we estimated about twenty-five hundred oysters were grown there. Small but hearty. It's our contribution. It's what we can do and we only have so many town residents who actually have docks that are on. There's certain requirements you have to have. You have to have two or three feet of water. You have to be in brackish water. Um, temperature has to be right, so it kind of limits who within our town can have cages, but it's been a successful program. We've really liked it. And if John was still here, I would say thank you to John for starting all of this for us. So that's pretty much it. We quiet down now at the end of, the last field trip will be October twenty-ninth, providing there's no weather issues in the next week or so. Um, and then we will be pretty quiet through the winter. We do a few table events, but other than that, we don't have any big projects going on, so. We're all good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments, questions?
The uh, the field trip's really impressive, like how organized you guys are and how informative it is. My son got to do it last year, so it was cool for me.
Yeah, it is a fun, fun program to do and support.
I'm hoping we can connect the school eventually so they can just walk right to the.
Yeah, that would be nice, cause it is all totally dependent on the buses getting there on time.
We're working on that.
And if that doesn't happen, we have uh.
Yeah.
Disrupts the program, so.
Great, well, thank you very much.
Alright.
All right. Right, so we have a economic uh development report. Um, and it's uh got a chairman sitting over here at my left and committee is looking to officially starting up in January of twenty twenty-six. And would you like to uh make a pitch to get members to join you?
Yeah, uh. Myself and Anthony actually are working with this, so I don't. I think it's probably co-chair. I think we've both equally had and that. I don't know how we do that, but it's it's both of us.
I'm the Robin to your Batman on this, brother.
Bro, it is birthday boy. Nineteen seventy-six, but it's very exciting. I think we're 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 gonna look at having a few sub committees. Deb, I see you sitting in the back. But we're we're looking to have uh. Addressing a few different items and uh we'll have more of a formal statement uh next month and hopefully have a bunch of excited. Volunteers in January, kick off our twenty twenty-six, two hundred fiftieth year anniversary for the country. So I look forward to hopefully big participation. Maybe we can get Jamie to get a stage build at Kelman's. We can have a an event or two. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anybody got any questions? All right. So. Yeah, Election Committee, uh, Eric, understand you have some.
Yeah, I just wanna, actually, um, we did meet, so it's underway. Um, and Randy is here. Randy, would you like to come up and uh discuss what we uh started with and where we're going? Or if not, I could do it.
That's, it's fine. Uh, not a whole lot to say. We we. I came to you before when we wanted to start the committee and kind of laid out all about the uh changes in the state law. Which which kind of requires us to do something for twenty twenty-eight. We have to look at options and and that's what the committee is gonna do. Kind of had a startup meeting on September twenty-fifth. Where I I kind of called it a meet and greet and a and a training uh with with the committee. And we have another meeting now set for October twenty-first. Uh, and and we'll start to get down in the business, you know, we'll we'll look at what options are and, you know, pros and cons. And then be able to bring that back to the uh Town Council.
Randy, did you get my email on the Calvert County Election Board meeting for October twenty-second?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, thank you so much. Yeah, and I plan on going to that.
Alright, cool.
Ju- just for contacts mainly.
Any other, got any questions for him? Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
And thanks for your many years of service. All right, um, next, Kellums Revitalization. Jamie? Oh, I skipped Green Team. Well, let's do Green Team. Okay, yeah, we have the report. I don't know that anybody is here from the Green Team, though. Um, the library mural. Um, the library mural, so forth, okay, yeah, it's, it's just an update of what's been going on, so, uh, and it's, it's a good, it's a good committee, okay, now, uh, since I skipped over it, we'll ask Kellman's Revitalization.
Uh, yes, uh, so no specific report, so just put a quick update, um, got approval, talking with Samelia regarding, uh, working with, uh, Wayne to look at, uh, having a planner come out, uh, to the site to, one, make sure, uh, the flow of the idea makes, uh, logical sense and is feasible, like that's the big piece, is it feasible, and then rendering, um, some sort of design outside of, uh, my PowerPoint, uh, slot that I provided the past, which, again, is, uh, nothing, uh, nothing nice, so, um, that said, though, there is a desire, uh, to do so, to, to get after this, starting likely, I, I think, realistically, timeframe would be in twenty twenty-six, um, but one of the first items that we, we talked about is this, this stage, um, that would give an opportunity, uh, to, you know, for the town to use it, um, and going to the movie nights, uh, recently, we watched the town staff, um, struggle, uh, to put up the inflatable, uh, movie screen, and then it, like, kept falling on top of them, so I think there's an opportunity to, uh, leverage this stage and at least the visual we have in our head to, uh, serve a, a purpose as well, uh, with regards to that, so we can have a higher quality experience for, for the residents, so, um, that's one of the priority items, uh, uh, that we're looking at, uh, in addition to whatever else I think we can, you know, working with Wayne, whatever is feasible, we have a laundry list of items, and I think we need to work with, you know, obviously the engineer to say, this is real, realistic, and then, uh, whatever is not realistic, we'll, we'll need to look at in fiscal year twenty-seven and twenty-eight.
Thank you. All right, next is the Twin Beach, uh, Community Health Coalition.
Yeah, didn't submit a, uh, report because we weren't able to get the unveiling of the mural in time to be able to talk about that, but what we did get accomplished.
It's full of thunder, didn't it?
No, you were just out of town. It's, uh, we, we wanted, we do want to officially do that, um, but we are now reaching out to a couple of stakeholders, and we're getting things together for next year, um, we had, uh, one initiative that was talked about in the administration before about the artwork on the electrical boxes, um, so we're going to start looking into that, trying to figure out what's the best way to incorporate that into, uh, mental health, so on and so forth, I mean, art is therapeutic, but, you know, we gotta have to be sensible about what we want to do, so we got to get that out of the way, and then on August eighth of next year, we're going to come to Kellman's Field, and we're going to do a mental and physical health day, um, this will be a, uh, time where we can have different vendors out there with different things, for mental health, physical health, and the biggest thing that I want to pull off is us having an American Ninja competition that can raise money for veterans, and I'm signing Dan and Jamie up to be the first contestants to battle it out, um, on those little pogo sticks with the fighting poles, so, but, but so that's, uh, so that's what we have, August eighth of next year, we're going to start, um, getting those things together, planning it, making sure we have all the right people in place, and then get the cameras out and let Jamie.
Loser gets in the dunk.
Yeah, that's right, and he'll keep one of the darts, because he thinks that's therapeutic, so, yeah, that's what we're doing.
Now, I'm going to nominate Chris Martinez, because he's a, he's a soldier.
So that's, that's where we are right now, we're about to start planning for next year, getting some things knocked out, um, well, yeah, we're, we're sailing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Walkability Committee.
Um, for the Walkability Committee, the main two things we did this month was we met with S H A, and I know my report says that it wasn't, uh, very productive, but that's because I called Banga, um, right before I was submitting this report and let him know, you know, I need to submit my report, um, he did not contact me in time for the report, but he did contact me afterwards, and so there are seven areas in town that are understudied by S H A, um, and within the next one hundred and twenty days, they'll, they'll give us an assessment of those areas that is updated and according to S, you know, new S H A regulations, so that is forward movement, uh, I really appreciate the town administrator's support and, um, S H A's support in keeping up the communication, so we're just going to keep doing that and keep walking down the path of moving forward and not being blocked, so, um, that's going well, and then the second big thing is.
Before you move off of that, I, I want to commend you for your leadership on this, because I, I sat in a, a meeting recently and, uh, where you presented a whole bunch of different options and talked about that, and, uh, I ju, I just think that you're doing a great job with that, and I just want to commend you for that.
Do mayor?
Getting stuff done.
I didn't mean to derail you.
I know, I was at my exciting part. Um, and, and the second big thing, and a thing that's near and dear to my heart, is we have, um, submitted, uh, railway trail expansion R F P. to the town attorney for her review, and so I know that she has, um, the majority of town items on her plate right now. Oh, oh, I'm not, I'm, I'm not complaining, I, I know what is on your plate.
And notice she made that comment with the microphone turned on.
I know, um, we do have a target date, I understand that there is, it is in line behind something else that is near and dear to my part, heart, which is the water park, um, but, um, my committee did a great job giving feedback and putting that together, giving resources and talking about the resources, and, um, really just deciding how we wanted to write that R F P. and how we wanted to approach the project of expanding our railway network, because it, it's a huge, very ambiguous endeavor that you can, you can go about in a lot of different ways, so I'm, I'm excited when Alyssa has the time to have her feedback as well, um, and, you know, hopefully that will move forward soon, too. Those are our updates.
Thank you. Um, Water Park, um, but you, you're going to do it?
Yeah, so we didn't have a meeting last month, but we met tonight, there was about five of us, and we pretty much got everybody up to speed, got some input from the committee, which I really appreciate, because it's helped us make some of these decisions as we've gone on, so hopefully next month we can start talking about the fun stuff.
Okay, great. Thank you, any questions? All right, uh, New Business. First time in New Business Town Council to consider awarding a contract to Calvert Ready Mix and Concrete Supplies, the amount of four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents for general paving projects of public roads.
Motion approved.
There a second?
Second.
All right, discussion, Eric?
I want a question, um, is this in our approved budget?
Yes.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, ask the question.
It's different areas in town, and there was a score sheet, and, um, I'll be honest, I'm behind getting that transparent and updated, we have it kind of written down, but the, we score the roads every year, the data's there, it's tracked year after year, I can share it with the council later, but basically we do a criteria, they meet X, we have a certain amount of money budgeted from highway user revenue, and we build it up to that, I scale that score sheet to make it fit that budgeted amount, if that makes sense, but I can share that with you offline, my goal is to get that transparent, and we can pull it up here one day, it tracks what we've done and, and what's kind of next in the queue.
Yeah, I, I would like to start tracking that and know, you know, where we're headed with all of those things.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay. I'm sorry.
We need to vote on, on.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. I don't know if there were any other questions.
Aaron, can you confirm that you had the motion in the second to move forward on that? Okay, thank you.
All right, item two under New Business, the council authorized his town staff to prepare and negotiate a design build contract with tribal contracting and paddock pools to replace existing water park with a maximum not to exceed price of eighteen million, five hundred sixty-eight dollars, I'm sorry, five hundred sixty-eight thousand, five hundred sixty dollars, and that's the total price with alternates, town council further, further authorizes the mayor to execute the contract upon approval of the form of contract by the town attorney, um, and, and there's other notes here that I have for you, additionally pursuant to, um, letter J. of section C. seven twenty-three of the town's procurement code, waive the competitive procurement, uh, procurement requirements for the water park rebuild project, this waiver and authorization is supported by the following findings, number one, the public interest is served, the public has expressed a desire for the water park to reopen in a design similar to the existing facility, this rebuild is aligned with the will of the electorate and the priority of the newly elected town council, engaging the original builder expedites, expedites the process and reduce costs thereby saving, uh, the public interest, or serving the public interest, uh, number two, competitive procurement not advantageous, the public works director has investigated the feasibility of the rebuild and consulted with multiple vendors, including the original builder, based on this investigation, it is determined that a competitive procurement process would not be expected to yield a more advantageous contract due to the complexity of site-specific nature of the project. And number three, justification for vendor selection, paddock pools, eh, as the original builder, has unique technical knowledge of the structure and its historical issues, their expertise enables a targeted rebuild that minimizes unnecessary demolition and allows for infrastructure reuse, re yielding significant savings and long-term, uh, durability. So at this point, I would like to, uh, call for a vote on.
Motion due to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
Uh, yeah.
I thought there might be.
I, it, it's cut and dry, I mean, it is either going to pass or fail, and we move on really quickly, but, um, it's germane to our earlier discussion, um, when we were talking about amending the, uh, agenda, and, uh, so I still would like to sever, um, the, the approval or the authorization to negotiate from the authorization to execute, so I would like to make a motion to amend, uh, this authorization, and specifically the amendment, again, would be on the third line after the word park, have a period there, and the rest of the language be struck out and, um, addressed at a later time after council has an opportunity to review the actual contract. Can I get a second?
The amendment fails for lack of a second, uh, any, anything further before we take, any further discussion before we vote? All right, all in favor of the, uh, motion, please, uh, say aye.
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 First.
We have some post, uh, post discussion.
Well, uh, we're taking the vote, did you vote yes or no?
I did vote yes, yeah.
Okay, okay, so we have five in favor and one opposed, I mean, we can take a moment to discuss a little bit further if you'd like.
Um, yeah, that went pretty quick, but, um, I, I am comfortable with leaving this to staff at this point, but I was going to ask Alyssa if, um, our statements or the statements that you just read satisfy, uh, the legal requirement for the, the charter amendment.
They will.
Which brings?
They will, um, but when, um, when the, uh, actual, uh, motion is made, I guess the motion, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, trying to walk that through, yes, I mean, I'm going to say, because, um, the agenda, uh, because the mayor read them out, and then the motion was based on them, I believe that they satisfy their requirement.
And you've reviewed them, and they satisfy all legal requirements, and we're in the clear.
They do.
Doing this bid waiver with those requirements.
Yeah, you're, um, legislate, they're legislative findings, and so when you as a council make legislative findings, there's a, um, a high degree of deference, um, given to those, so, um, as long as you have a, a rational basis for making those findings, they're going to be sufficient, um, you need to, you know, do more than just pay sort of lip service to them, but I think the mayor gave you actual factual bases for supporting a finding that those things were met.
Okay, and I, I think that there could even be more findings based on conversations with people, um, that we've had, that would definitely identify our particular contractors as the people we would want to design the pool.
So you're right, that did move, the vote did move pretty quickly, ordinarily you would add those things on during the discussion before the vote.
Right, right, okay, um, well, I'd just like to say good luck with your negotiations, and, um, yes, please do your best, we're all looking forward to a water park.
I think, I think we really did do our due diligence, but looking at this from every angle, like we discussed it for how many months, and we finally got to this point, and I'm just thankful to, uh, the Maryland and the town staff for helping us get to this point, and, uh, I'm excited to bring back this awesome, unique amenity.
And I'm thankful to the council for the council's support, because that's what's, that's what's also needed to make this happen, and so, yes, I mean, it's great that Maryland, we, we twisted her arm to come back to the town, and, uh, she's been just working this, uh, very hard, so, and, um, everybody, I mean, you know, Jay's done a whole lot, everybody has.
And it's expensive, but we, we have, we're in a position that we're able to do this, which is pretty amazing.
It, it's fantastic, and so, uh, at this point, it's time for public comment, uh, now, don't run away, don't run away, don't run away, we got birthday cake. We got birthday cake, she ran away. Uh, time for public comment, please come up and give us your name, sir, and.
Michael Bennett, when we're key, good evening, mayor, council members, I'm Michael Bennett, and I'm running for the rep, to represent Maryland's District Twenty-Seven B. in the House of Delegates, after coming to Chesapeake Beach on a military transfer over a decade ago, my wife Megan and I knew Chesapeake Beach and Calvert County would be our forever home, driving down two sixty for the first time, watching the flag fly over Veterans Memorial Park with the water view, my wife said, I don't care what you do, you find us a home here, because we're never leaving, and since then, we spent almost every summer at the water park and at the field, and growing up and living and volunteering in the community.
We're in the same boat, except I've been here for forty years now.
Yeah, I was only in the military thirty, I can't compete with that.
I wasn't in the military very.
I've spent my life in the service of others for nearly three decades at the U. S. Coast Guard, where I led missions in Iraq and Afghanistan, uh, to serving as the senior defense official in Haiti, leading humanitarian aid and crisis response operations after disaster struck. I later served in senior roles within the U. S. Intelligence Community and in the private tech sector, helping protect our nation and people in times of uncertainty at home and abroad, today I'm proud to be a small business owner right here in Maryland, working and raising my family in the same community I hope to represent, I've seen what leadership looks like in moments of real crisis, and I've learned that leadership isn't about politics, it's about what's going on right here today, and I'm incredibly grateful for this town council, it's about serving people, it's about showing up, listening and solving problems with integrity and common sense, as a father, grandfather, business owner and community volunteer, I know the struggles Maryland families face every day, rising costs at the grocery store, schools that need better support, roads that can't keep up with the growth, if you've ever been on Route Four commuting into D. C., Chesapeake, uh, roads that can't keep up with support, and Chesapeake Bay that needs protection for future generations, uh, in Annapolis, I'll fight for economic growth that benefits working families, strong public schools that prepare our kids for the future, especially in the world of high tech and A. I., um, safe, well-planned communities that preserve our quality of life, which is incredibly important down here, I'll support investments in infrastructure and broadband, which was discussed today, protect our water and natural resources, and champion veterans, first responders, and small business owners who form the backbone of our local community, my vision is simple for Maryland, and that's a safer, stronger, more secure, uh, region in Twenty-Seven B. and the surrounding counties, where opportunity reaches every household and government works for the people, not the other way around, I'm running because service doesn't end when you. I'm running because service doesn't end when you take off the uniform, it just changes the mission. Together, we can restore trust, strengthen our communities, and build a Maryland that works for all of us. I'm Michael Bennett, and I'm seeking your trust, your voice, and your support. In the future, I'll be selling water and caffeine following these very long meetings, and I look forward to talking with all of you afterwards. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for uh speaking. Is there anybody else that like, would like to make a comment before we adjourn? Alright, time for the council lightning round. Which way do we wanna start?
Um, sure, I'll, I'll start. Uh I will be as fast as I can. I got three quick little items I don't First, I just wanna give a shout to the young lady sitting in the back that survived this, like, no way could my kids ever do that, so. Uh very, very, very impressed with that, uh that she has been so quiet and amazing. So that was one. Uh second, I just wanted to give a call to the Beach Bucks Homecoming. I, I mentioned it earlier, but the good side about that is there was a lot of kudos uh Samelia, specifically for like the town staff and the relationships. And it was nice to get out there uh and have real grilled food again uh versus what we used to have. Uh you know, I, I mentioned some comments with the sheriff, but if you were out there, you actually would have never noticed any of those issues were going on. It was just really smooth. There was a lot of people, a lot of vendors, uh and that is what uh I think that whole e- event is about. So uh Savannah specifically got a lot of attention uh saying how much she's been helping out uh across board. So I just wanna call it out. Um, and then um the last thing I just wanna say is that in twenty twenty-four, regarding the water park, uh in twenty twenty-four, uh the voters spoke. Uh in twenty twenty-five, the council actioned. Uh and mayor, it is on you to deliver, sir, in twenty twenty-seven.
Alright, let's do it.
No pressure. No, no, not all right yourself, but no pressure.
I tell you what, we got a great team, and we've, we're working with people that are, are gonna get it done. Absolutely. Who, who's next? Dan?
Like to wish everybody a happy Halloween. It's a Friday night, so I'm pretty sure it's gonna be a big turnout. There's a bunch of events. Uh I think this weekend, uh next weekend, and then Halloween weekend, so that's exciting. Getting ready to go into the holiday season, so uh the town starts to come alive and it's really nice. I'm glad we have uh put in the work together as a council, and we continue to put the work in to look out for the town's best interests in the water park. And I wanted to thank John for taking lead in the water park.
Thank you.
Marilyn. You know, Jay, we've, we've, we've worked together and uh look forward to uh having some happy times in town. Thanks.
Anybody else?
Um, just, I guess a couple of things. I was just thinking about uh for the fiber, um really glad to see the work that's going on there. Uh the road's painted up uh in Richfield Station. People are wondering what's going on. Um and I can at least give them something, but um if we can try to communicate, I don't know if we're, can we communicate on our website about what's going on, or somehow get the message out across the board. A lot of people are wondering what's going on, and I think when they find out, they're gonna be really happy. So.
I'll tell you what, looking at the prices, I'm really happy.
Yeah, so it's good. It's exciting. Um and then uh oh, I'm excited to go see that, that new logo. So I'll be checking out right after this thing.
It's not new. It's been up for over a month.
Some floodlights on it.
You mean?
Next time you come out of Roland's, look across.
And uh also looking forward to a, a lively discussion about chickens next uh, next month.
Put that on the agenda.
Uh, we're gonna have a um, a work session. Okay. Okay, and then we're gonna have to talk about what we talked about before. Okay, that's it. Have a good night, everybody.
Yeah, I just wanna echo what Jamie was saying about the homecoming. It was, it was really cool being out there. I just felt like a really big sense of community. I was actually on the grill for a little bit, helping out, cause my daughter was uh cheering. And uh Anthony got people riled up at the pep rally. That was pretty cool. Yeah, I'm really excited about tonight's vote and what's coming. It's gonna be awesome. Really looking forward to it. Thanks.
Um, yeah, same sentiment. Um, John, thank you for your leadership on the water park. I, you know, you helped me stay sane. You
A lot of phone calls, eh?
Yes. Um, I, I still will say seeing is believing, but um it is in the mayor's hand. So um I'm looking forward to having Water Park. I appreciate all the comments, um especially the people that came out to speak. Um, some of your sentiments were really outstanding, and um I can't improve on them, so um thank you for your participation, your comments about the water park, and good luck. Make sure it doesn't just demo, bring it back up.
I don't think that's a problem.
Uh, to wrap it up, um thank everyone for hanging in here, staying. You know, when you sit up here, you might wanna walk out for a little bit, but you look out and you see the people who showed up. It's good to know that people would care about what's going on in their town. We need more of that um across the board for all politics. We all need to show up, have our voices heard, say what we want, um because there's a bunch of people spending your money at the end of the day. Um, join the committees, have the conversations, um encourage folks to reach out. Um unfortunately, when this administration came in, there were a lot of things that weren't effective, weren't moving. Tennis court was dark, the, the water park was dilapidated. Um, there was no color, not a lot of life, a lot of things that were left in limbo. And it's not about pointing fingers, it's about just coming in and doing the work to get things done. And it's good that we have a council where we have somebody who's fiscally conservative and really cares about the minutia of things. We have an incredibly smart person who thinks every little minute thing through, you know. And we have people who wanna push through, and we have people who are earnest and, and have heart. And us working together to get things done, even though we have our differences, is very, very important, because it's not about any of us up here. It's about the people that are sitting out there watching us. So every time we get a win, we get a win for the town, not for ourselves. And as long as we keep it out in focus, we're gonna keep winning, things are gonna keep opening. I now have a pickleball set in the house. It's on. I'm gonna let everybody know when I'm gonna be there. And once I figure out what the hell it is, you all are going down. But uh, thank you. But there's it. So thank you all so much for the birthday wishes, and I would like to, to, to motion to adjourn.
Before we do that, I have one more announcement. Uh after we adjourn, right in this room over here, we have birthday cake.
That's why everybody stay. They stay for the cake, man.
Yeah, they're staying. They're safe for the cake. But I wanted to say that before we dismissed everybody. So uh, again, happy birthday, and uh now I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion for adjournment.
Second, second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Good meeting, council. Thank you very much. Stay for cake, all of you that are here. Thank you.
Backing more discussion.
Um.
I know, that's what, that's
There's nothing worth discussing.
I made that comment.